All right, good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. Today is September 9th, 2025. We will begin with roll call tonight. Janice, go on.
Present.
Richard Taylor.
Present.
Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Stu Hardy is absent this evening. V A Lopes.
Present.
Cheryl Valentine.
Present.
Adam Reposa.
Present.
Alan Myers is on his way here. He will be here momentarily. Also joining us tonight, we have Todd Romano, who is our Assistant Solicitor and Planning Board Counsel. We have Ashley Sweet, who is our interim administrative officer and consulting planner from Weston and Sampson. And we have Ed Rotella, our land use clerk. So before we go, just a little bit of housekeeping here. So we have a lot to get through this evening. So we are going to manage this meeting pretty effectively and efficiently. We have a mix of public hearings and open, open public meetings, and there is a difference there. Public hearings, we will open officially and close for comment. We will keep comments to three minutes each. For open public meeting agenda items, open comments from the public is at our discretion. That being said, I know there are a fair amount of people who are very interested in a number of the topics we have here, and we'll do our best to hear everyone. So with that, let us move to Agenda Item Number One, which is a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the text of the Comprehensive Community Plan to correspond with the Proposed Zoning Ordinance text amendments, adopting the commercial athletic recreation facility use, and update the community comprehensive plan as to what uses are appropriate in the Tiverton Business Park and Plan Development Park floating overlay zone. So we will talk through specific sections of the Comprehensive Community Plan. Proposed for amendment are Chapter 3.0 Planning Concept and Chapter 5.0 Land Use Plan. So we'll take a discussion and a possible vote here. The intent here is the, these amendments are intended to broaden the scope of the uses within the business park and the PDP floating zone and attract additional business opportunities. Further, the amendments reflect and implement the goals of the state's own plan titled Land Use 2025. The amendments are limited to the above cited chapters and sections of the Comprehensive Community Plan. With that, Todd, is there anything you would like to start off with here?
I think the amendments, the proposed amendments speak for themselves, and it really is, as you've indicated, Mr. Gerlach, to bring the comprehensive plan in into coordinates with the zoning ordinance and what uses are permitted there.
Has everyone on the, so these materials were sent out during our July packet here. Does anyone on the board have any comments or questions before we open the public hearing? Sure.
On page three, lines 28 and 29, I just have some concern where it says, "A model for the Tiverton Business Park is the Quonset Point Davisville Port and Commerce Park." I had been working with the Business Park for quite a number of years, and I had never heard that reference before. And I just feel like the Quonset Point area is much different from the land that we have in Tiverton. You know, it has air, it has rail, it has deep water access. It's over 3,000 acres. They have over 20 miles of infrastructure there, and I would just don't feel comfortable with that line added in there.
Yeah, I understand there's some concern about that, Cheryl, and I just added that as an example I could come up with of a, of a business park that has a sports recreation facility, has industrial uses, has multiple commercial uses there, as well as a hotel, which your PDP has, as well as restaurants, grocery market. I thought it was analogous. I am not wedded to that by any stretch of the imagination.
Okay.
I would support Cheryl's thing. I would like to see that stricken from there. Having been around, when the industrial park, as it was called before, that was not the intent for that parcel of land. And I know it's got a lot of uses in it, but, I mean, even though, I just don't feel comfortable with it. I'd like to see that sentence stricken.
Okay. Any other comments from the board outside of that particular item? Because we'll come back to that before I open up the public hearing. All right, seeing none, we will officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to speak on this matter? Ms. Ephraim? Again, this is a public hearing. We're going to have three minutes.
Karen Ephraim, 74 North Christopher Avenue. I am concerned about that sentence about Quonset being in there. I'm going on the assumption that everybody received my letter and the attachments to it on this board. So given that, I think that it's a horrible idea because I think it'll just insinuate that more heavier industrial type of uses might be able to make their way into the PDP. We are talking about having a PDP, an industrial park that is right near our waters, our public drinking water source. We need to do as much as we can to protect it, and I think limiting any kind of heavy industrial use that might end up being entertained needs to just be deeply considered. So I really am opposed to it, as Cheryl mentioned. This, our PDP does not have access to air. It does not have access to rail. It does not have access to the sea like Quonset does. So I think it's a bit of a stretch to say that it should be modeled like Quonset. Thank you very much.
Great. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Anyone else?
Susan Anderson, Main Road. I agree with all of that that's been said. I also don't think it should be modeled after the Quonset Point, Quonset Point, because it never, never was.
Thank you. Final call. Anyone else from the public? All right, we will officially close the public hearing on this matter. Any more board comment or question? All right, I'll just say a couple of things. So I was with Todd. I think it was illustrative in general. I agree. I think calling that out was really meant to highlight the diversity of the businesses that are present there and not necessarily insinuate that we were going to be building a port or a rail system or anything like that. I too am not wedded to this language, so I'd like to put it before the board as part of a vote to amend that. So I will, before we get there, is there any, so that's just one part of the proposed changes? Does anyone else have any other comment on the other proposed changes?
I agree with the other.
Okay. All right, so I will entertain a motion to accept the amendments as written with the exception of updating section, there we go. I should probably turn mine off, too. There we go. With the exception of updating Section 5.5 Future Land Use to remove the sentence that spreads across line 28 and 29, which states, "A model for the Tiverton Business Park is the Quonset Point Davisville Port and Commerce Park." But all other content of the proposed amendment changes will move through as captured.
We are striking that sentence.
We are striking the sentence. "A model for the Tiverton Business Park is the Quonset Point Davisville Port and Commerce Park."
You made the motion. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item Two, which is a recommendation to the Town Council on Amendments to Appendix A Zoning Ordinance Commercial Athletic Recreation Facility. Article Two Definitions, Add a definition for Commercial Athletic Recreation Facility. Article Four, Section Six, Adding to the District Use Table Commercial Athletic Recreation Facility. And Article Six, Other District Regulations. Performance Standards are proposed in Article Six, Section 10 for Commercial Athletic Recreation Facility. This would be a discussion and a vote on a positive recommendation to the Town Council, who will have the final approval on this. This is a open public meeting, not a public hearing, so we will begin with board comments here. Todd, anything to add on this? Pretty straightforward?
Straightforward. The one thing I will add is because of the multiple amendments the Town Council has adopted over the past several months, the PDP is now Section 20 of Article Four, the zoning ordinance, and technical, I'll make those corrections. I assume you would agree with those.
Yes. Any other comments or questions by the board? We all understand why we are putting this positive recommendation forth. This is in support of proposed development.
Agreed.
What's that, Janice?
Spelling error. Oh, my.
Scandalous. Yes, can you please?
Page four.
Can you use the mic, Janice? I'm sorry.
Page four, paragraph three, be next to the last line, special event permit. Should be special event unless otherwise specified.
I see. Thank you, Janice. Looks like line 19 of page four.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Janice. Any other planning board comment? Question? I will very quickly entertain if anyone has any comment from the audience here. All right. Hearing none. Are you guys good? Okay. Let us move to, I'll entertain a motion then, to make a positive recommendation to the articles put forth here in terms of adding the definition, adding to the district use table, and adding to other district regulations, the performance standards as put forth in the materials with the spelling update correction.
I second. Just one thing, Mr. Gerlach, is that because this proposed ordinance is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, which you just amended?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who made the second? I'm sorry.
I don't want, I heard some paper there, too.
We did it simultaneously. I'll second. We give it to Adam. We have a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. All right, we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Longplex Ice and Golf LLC and LP Properties LLC, by and through Jim Long, James Long, I'm sorry. This is a petition for a major land development master plan application, propose 91,559 square foot two-story building for a sports complex, which includes but is not limited to two ice rinks, 12 pickleball courts, driving range and virtual golf stations, restaurant associated locker rooms, ice skate rentals, concession stands, storage, and office space for the sports complex. Are we all connected here? Floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Daniel Riley, on behalf of Longplex Ice and Golf LLC, I'm joined by Chris Duhamel, who is the project engineer, as well as James or Jim Long, the owner of Longplex Ice and Golf and the owner of this project. This is, I believe, a continuation of the hearing that was started on July 1st regarding master plan approval for this project. We certainly can supplement what we had entered into the record then. I will say there were a few issues or questions that came up at that meeting that we can address tonight, and certainly we can answer any questions that the board may have regarding those or any other issues. One issue that came up at the July 1st hearing related to the zoning change that you just made the recommendation on, it was more of a procedural point. Even if we had, master plan approval couldn't have been given that night because the zoning change had to be recommended. In order to do that, we needed to have the public hearing. So now that that's happened, this project, provided the council does ratify that zoning change, would be consistent with the zoning code. Another issue that came up at the July 1 meeting was the issue of the road abandonment on those two parcels. And if you remember, this is land that is currently under contract with Longplex Ice and Golf. It's owned by the town. Part, one of the conditions to close was the abandonment of the two roads, which you can see, excuse me, which you can see on the map, and it's also on the maps, your hard copy. It's Enterprise Way and Communication Drive. One of the conditions to close was for the Town Council to abandon those roads. That had not happened as of the July 1 meeting. There was a question of a potential abutment or abutment with potential access issues, but those were resolved, and the council did meet on July 14th and did formally abandon both of those roads, so they have been abandoned. And then another condition to close certainly would be master plan approval for, for this project. There was also a question raised about rock mounds potentially on the property, and I, what I can say is that Mr. Long has, of course, developed Longplex and has now started work across the street on the site clearing, at least, for the street legal project, which is also before you for that, for preliminary plan approval at the next stage. But he's received the permis and has cleared the land there. In all of our experience on that property, as well as surveying and conducting due diligence on this property, we have not seen any evidence of any rock mounds or any rocks that would be inconsistent with the way the park looks generally, which of course is very rocky. There are plenty of rocks. From a site development perspective, it's quite a challenge, but we haven't found anything that's out of the normal, out of normal or otherwise would suggest that there would be cause to bring in consultants to further study the issue. So that's just what we can provide based on our understanding of the land, surveying it, as well as developing the other parcels immediately across the street and adjacent to that. And then lastly, one issue that did come up at the last meeting was, we did have, we heard from the building, or excuse me, the fire marshal regarding the, the plan, the building plan and the use codes that would be followed for that plan review. And the update I have to provide the board tonight is that we are working with the building official and the fire marshal on those plans and understanding the use codes. It's not a Tiverton issue. It's a code issue. The code is not updated to reflect uses in a modern athletic facility. And so we're working with other towns nearby that have, in Rhode Island, that have approved similar facilities to see through their fire marshal's office and their building officials, how have they analyzed those plans so they can arrive at a correct use and then determine capacity and parking and so forth after that. So the update for the board would be, we, those conversations are ongoing, and we certainly would not be able to get those plans approved by either the fire marshal or the building official unless and until we come to that understanding. And we would expect that to occur after final plan approval, before we were to be able to pull any building permits. And so I would suggest to the board that that shouldn't stand in the way of obtaining master plan approval to move along, since we're going to continue working through the plans with our architect and our engineer and the fire marshal and the building official. So those are the four issues that I believe came up at the, at the last meeting, but if there are any questions, we certainly can walk through the plan again, but everything that we, we entered into the record at the July 1 meeting, I think a good synopsis of the proposal.
Great. Anything else?
Unless there are any questions, Reid.
Ashley, you had prepared a memo on this. Would you like to talk through that before we, actually? Todd, do you recommend going to the public hearing first or have an Ashley walk through her stuff?
Is Ashley prepared to talk about it?
Sure, but I'm happy you do that.
Let's, 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 let's have you talk it through now.
Okay. So you have a memo in front of you with a draft decision, provides you with the facts of the application, identifying all of the materials that were submitted as part of the application. There are 13 proposed draft conditions of approval, excuse me, 16, followed by a set of required findings from your subdivision regulations with a short description as to how the project either meets those findings or if more information is needed to meet that finding, what that would be. And that's basically a quick summary of the memo. I'm not sure if you want me to go into greater detail.
I don't need the detail, but I want to offer it up if others on the board would like Ashley to walk through that detail from her memo. I'm not hearing anything, so I think we're good. Can you?
Excuse me, Mr. Gerlach. Adam, you and Alan, you weren't here for the first hearing. You're comfortable with everything?
In July.
Correct.
I watched it.
You watched it?
I saw it.
Yeah, I'm not too into it. Yeah, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Yeah, good call out.
And I'll just also note that as you're, as you're deliberating and talking, I'll take notes, so if you make changes to conditions or findings, I will, I will keep track of those for you.
Okay. So why don't we open it up for public hearing before the board? I know I have a couple of questions, but just we'll open it up. So this is an official public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on this matter?
Susan Anderson, Main Road. So July 2nd, Professor Robert Thorson from University of Connecticut, a Stonewall expert, was talking in Little Compton on stone walls down there. And after his talk, I approached him with the plans of the Ice House and explained to him what I had found from previous walks in that area in the fall and the winter of the stone walls and the stone mounds that we had found. So he agreed to meet with me at 6:00 the next morning. So we met at 6:00. We went across the street, and we found one stone mound. It wasn't the same ones that I had seen to the west because it was all overgrowth. Right now, this time of year, there's like blueberries, wild blueberries that are about this high, mixed with greenbrier in there. So as far as you could see, you saw green. You didn't see any mounds. We kept walking. And about what you see on that, on that screen where you have the right angle going into the green part of the driving range, that stone wall, just before that, there is a mound. And that mound was not like the ones I had seen to the west. That mound definitely was one that was handmade by, and he said it was like a farmer, it was a pioneer farmer, first person on that property that just threw stones, and I agreed with him because it was not like the others that I had seen, which were perfectly placed, all about the same size stone on all the other mounds that are about 30 feet, 30 feet long by about 10 to 15 feet wide. And those to the west. This one measured about the same. We measured it. He wrote a memo, a report on it, which he sent me the next day, and I had sent that to, I believe, the planning board and the town administrator and I forget who else I had sent it to, so that you all knew what he had found. What he said was that, and then we saw that, that wall. That wall with the angle there, he saw that. We walked over to it, and he said, "It's a very high wall. It's a single-layered wall," meaning it's a single, there's not two walls next to each other, it's just one wall, but it's high. And he said, "Because it's high, it's definitely a pasture lot for livestock." And it was like a pioneer, like a first farmer. So I looked into the, the deeds, and sure enough, there's like one person who's buried, he's actually buried in the cemetery between the DPW and the police station. And I'm trying to remember his name. I think it was Sherman? I can't remember. But anyway, he's the one that owned all that property. So what, what Professor Thorson said was, it is very, a high stone wall like that is very unusual and should be preserved because we don't normally have high stone walls like that in these first type of, you know, it's a first farming type of area. That's what he said. And that's essentially what he, what he says in his, in his investigation.
Ms. Anderson, we passed the three-minute mark. Is there any?
I just wanted to say that if you, if you wait until like the fall and the winter, you will see the mounds that I saw to the west, and it's about where your parking lot is. That's where the, the big mounds are, where they're nicely piled. But those stone walls where the driving range is, those are what Professor Thorson said really must be preserved because we, it's very unusual to have them, especially in this area.
And so you're just talking here?
No, we're the driving, up.
This is the driving, right?
Yeah. See where the angle is? The first angle. Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, those, they're like, they're like high.
Okay. Thank you. We'll come back to that. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Final call, public comment? Okay. That officially closes the public hearing on this matter.
Mr. Gerlach, I want to make one statement. You pointed out to me earlier that the agenda identifies the time clock is expiring on October 10. That was my mistake. I had not updated this. I had communications with Mr. Riley after the last meeting where we agreed to extend that time clock until October 10. So we're not in violation. October 10 is what the time clock is extended to. Is that correct, Mr. Riley? Thank you.
All right, so just so everyone's clear, in the agenda, it says the time clock is set to 90 days on September 8th. We're clarifying that that should read October 10.
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay. Let's open it up to the board with any comments or questions here.
I have a question.
Sure.
Earlier, you had mentioned that there was a resolution around the dissolving the two roads. Was one of those resolved with Mr. Cobasa, I believe his last name?
Correct.
Okay. And everybody's fine?
We, we abandoned the roads, and he did appear at the council meeting, and we had a similar conversation from the council on that.
Okay.
And then my last question.
to be and just, you know, with kids egressing at night and...
I'd have Mr. Long respond to that.
We will have a game plan if we're going across the street back and forth, but this ice rink is actually half the size of Longplex, so it is a lot smaller. And there's only two venues going on at the same time, minus the golf. So if we do go across the street, there will be, you know, there will be well-lit and designed to be safe.
Excuse me. Mr. Long, and I know we've talked with you before, but do you swear that the testimony that you have given shall be by this hearing to this board and this matter shall be the truth and all truth and nothing above the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can everyone here, I just want to make sure these mics are, is the mic on?
And then just, and I apologize, one follow-up question, just because people like to people and you're going to have just a larger volume, will there be security either if there's an event within the Ice House for larger events?
So everything that we do has to go through the police department and the fire department. If they require it, it's a done deal. If they don't feel it needs to be, we don't do it.
Okay.
But it has to be approved by them.
Okay, great. That's it.
Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Gerlick. What do you mean, everything has to be approved? Just...
Events.
Events, but not league? Like you're going to have leagues there, I assume?
Correct. So leagues are leagues. Leagues are going to be 20 people on an ice rink and a team coming in. So there's nothing major, nothing to worry about that. If we did an event like we do at Longplex, then it has to go in front of the planning board and it has to go in front of the police department, I mean, not the planning board, Town Council. And the police department and fire department have to sign off on it.
Just wanted to make sure everyone was clear about the difference.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have one about Mrs. Anderson with the mounds. Has any group come forward claiming these mounds or any indigenous peoples or anything like that that makes them significant other than their pile of rocks? Simple question.
Nobody has ever approached us. Sorry. Go ahead. I suppose that's all. Nobody has approached us.
Okay. Okay. Listen, did you have something to add though?
Oh, okay. I would just add that with regards to other testimony, you may have heard, we haven't been presented with any expert testimony from any admitted expert on the subject. I'm not familiar with the specific locations that have been identified on there, but again, we've walked and there are plenty of rocks, particularly as we plan for potential construction, and we haven't seen anything that would be consistent with having to bring anyone in. I also would say that this will be subject to DEM review and at the very least to get a grubbing permit from DEM, even outside of planning board review of the project. And a part of their process, it's not their main focus, but a part of their process is they can take notice of a suspected or potential natural heritage area and review that or have that reviewed by the Historic Preservation Heritage Commission. They have pretty wide jurisdiction in that regard. And we will be going before them for several permits here. So this isn't something that the state will not be seeing if the planning board approves it. And it couldn't potentially be brought in front of experts who have the lineage and all of the history and all of that. That level of review is still quite possible.
So RIDEM will be on site as part of some of those other...
Well, they will be on site for permits, but I can't promise as a part of a natural heritage review, which is something that can be a part of their jurisdiction. If their scientists feel that there's a need, they have the ability to flag that literally and figuratively, I guess, and can make that subject to part of their review process.
Okay. Sure.
Mr. Riley, do they perform GPR, penetrate any radar? If there's any. Do you know?
I don't believe they do, but I won't speak to their DEM's process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to call your attention to the draft decision, number 14. We have a condition that there be an archaeological assessment conducted to confirm that there are no historical or archaeological features on the site. Even the area intended for construction-specific attention shall be paid to the rock piles that exist on the site.
That's the memo. Which memo?
That's the dated 7/31.
Okay.
And it's condition 14.
Yep, perfect. I see it here. Okay, great. I have just a couple of straightforward questions here. So we have a June 25 memo from Nathan Michael, who's our consulting engineer from Weston and Sampson, saying that several recommendations regarding the site plans and narrative around the hydraulic evaluation, will those have to be worked into... When will those get addressed?
They could be conditions of approval of the master plan, so the applicant would have to come back at preliminary with those items addressed.
Are you guys aware of that memo?
Yes.
Okay. They didn't seem, I mean, I can pull that back up, they didn't seem all that demanding here. But I think we should make that a condition, just to stay on the safe side of things here.
What was the date of the memo you had?
That is June 25, 2025. I mean, a lot of it just seemed like administrative, like just extra check the box there. And we've already talked about the other questions I had. Is there any other comment from the planning board? Comments, questions? Rosemary, did you?
No, I don't have those memos, that's what I was asking.
Come again.
We got those before the July meeting for their first hearing. We got those.
Yeah, they're from the July meeting.
They're in the package.
Ashley, before we move to a vote, is there anything else in your memo you'd like to call out? Maybe just a highlight of the findings of fact?
The only addition I have would be an additional condition that I just added, and when you're ready, I can read that.
Yep. Why don't we do that?
So I just added condition number 17, that items identified in the June 25, 2025 memo from consulting engineer Nathan Michael shall be addressed and submitted as part of the preliminary plan application.
Have you guys seen a copy of them? Ashley's memo?
We have that Town Council.
Okay. Any comments or questions there? Pretty straightforward.
Just one minute, please.
Okay.
I believe we need an additional condition, that approval is subject to the Town Council adopting the comprehensive permit amendment as well as the zoning ordinance amendments.
Okay. Yeah, it's called out in narrative form in the memo, but not a specific condition. So that's just administrative.
Obvious, though.
Right?
Right. Yeah, I would expect that to be a...
Yeah. So that'll be 18?
Yes.
So just a highlight of the required findings of fact, so we're stating in the affirmative that this proposed development is consistent with the Town Comprehensive Plan and has satisfied, well, will satisfactorily address the issues where it's consistent. The proposed development is in compliance with the standards and provisions of the Town zoning ordinance. We've gone through and highlighted there will be no significant negative environmental impacts if the proposed development is shown on the plan. And then the proposed development will not result in the creation of lots, areas, parcels with such physical constraints to development that building on those lots, area parcels in accordance with the pertinent regulations and building standards would be impractical unless such lots, areas, parcels are identified in permanent open space or are to be permanently reserved for a public purpose on the approved recorded plans. And then the final finding of fact is that all proposed land developments and all subdivision lots have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street. Physical access by means of an easement, oh, that's not required, so we're good there. Any final questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the master plan application for Longplex Ice and Golf LLC and LP Properties LLC, subject to the applicant meeting the 18 conditions of approval that have been outlined in Ashley's memo and amended here tonight.
And you're adopting that memorandum and its findings of fact?
That is correct. Sir, second.
I will make the motion that we grant a conditional master plan approval based upon what you just listed.
Subject to meeting all of the requirements. I heard Alan off my right side, left side technically. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. There you go.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to agenda item number four, which is Street Legal LLC, buying through James Long. This is, the petition is a major land development request for a special meeting and a request to combine preliminary and final plans. So this is for the proposed 29,600 square foot two-story building for a car garage and an additional parking lot with 79 spaces on AP 107, lots 813 through 818. Okay. Anything you want to kick off with?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I will just add that we did request that we have, that the planning board hold a special meeting, and I can give you the reasons why, for this project. We also requested, in a bit of a hail mary pass, but we did request a combination preliminary and final plan review. I will spare the board the mental gymnastics that I've discussed with the solicitor and others, that we will withdraw that particular request regarding the combination review. It's never been done before, and while I think there's a possibility we could do it, I don't think it would be necessary here. We are requesting a special meeting to be held at the board's convenience. The reason is because we would like to move this project along frankly as quickly as possible while going through the process. We are up against a relatively tight construction window. Mr. Long can comment on the particulars related to that, but it's specific to this project because this structure is actually made of prefabricated components. And so the construction sequencing can be accelerated quite quickly, but we have to beat the real freeze and winter setting in. If we can have a meeting prior to the next scheduled meeting on the preliminary plan application, address those conditions, move on to administrative final plan review, we would have an opportunity to start construction before things got really challenging for the season, is the long and the short of it.
As to timing, your next meeting is October 7. You have a special meeting scheduled for September 25. That is the absolute earliest we could actually have a special meeting for this because of a 14-day notice period that's required.
Yeah.
The board would be, or the applicant would be saving 12 days, assuming the application was granted at that time. I don't know how much difference 12 days makes, but more importantly to you, it's my understanding that you're going to have a large agenda in October. Thank you.
So I just want to call out for the board, and Todd, I thank you for putting this together. I had asked Todd to pull together sort of a step-by-step timeline, and he handed out hard copies tonight.
I did not. I can't.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I think it would be good just for the board to have that. That sort of just laid everything out step by step. Now, I will say, I have no issue taking up the preliminary plan at our already scheduled, already scheduled September 25 special meeting. As folks on the board know, we just have a lot of things coming to us. And any opportunity that we have to spread out all of this work across multiple meetings, I think is advantageous for the board for a variety of reasons, preparation not being the least of those. So I'm supportive of putting this preliminary plan application review on the September 25 special meeting.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Gerlick, I forgot one thing that's critical, is the application has not been submitted entirely yet. So we can't even give you a certification of completeness to even send the notice out.
So let's back out and be extremely clear here this evening as to when that preliminary plan needs to be in and certified complete so that the sequencing can be completed and we can have it for September 25.
I think we recognize that we're all trying to not assist or move the project along, but keep everything moving along.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe Ms. Sweet will be able to certify the application complete rather quickly if she has the complete application by tomorrow.
Okay. Is that fair?
Well, we need to back up from the date of the meeting to the date of the advertising, which will then give me the window of time that I have to get it done.
The September 25 meeting, 14 days notice, is September 11.
No advertising.
That's Thursday?
Yes.
I don't have the application at the moment.
Where is the application?
We have the hard copy. We have the electronic, we have the hard copy that was filed, we just have to get it electronically submitted. So we can have that done right away.
I mean, that essentially gives me a day because Ed has to have the ad, right? And the abuttered one is ready and he has to have...
No ad.
Oh, no. Okay, so it's just the abutter.
It's just the abutter, which is done.
So we've already notified abutters?
No.
No, we have not.
We haven't. But he can't go and notify abutters until we know that there's an application that's complete. So it essentially gives me like a day.
Okay. And I recognize the difficulty of that.
I mean, I don't want to be the one that stops things from moving, but that's kind of ridiculous. I'm going to be honest.
Yeah.
It's not a small application and it's a day. And I am a part-time person for you. I will do my best, but the lack of a digital application has prevented me from being able to review anything because physically they are...
This is not the first request either for that.
Okay.
Yeah, the end of last week, apparently the master plan was resubmitted electronically as opposed to preliminary plan. So we just have to get the hard copy, the preliminary plan is done, it's been filed, but obviously you need it electronically. So that shouldn't be delayed, but I acknowledge you haven't received that.
So we need to be clear moving forward that we're getting electronic and paper copies at the same time in order to facilitate expeditious review.
Certainly.
So I don't think we can, I understand that's a lot. And so when will that be submitted electronically?
I don't see why it can't be done tomorrow since we already have it.
But like tomorrow is like before the start of business tomorrow. You know what I mean? Like that can't show up at noon time and Ashley's lost half a day at that point.
It can be done tonight.
Even better.
It'll be done tonight.
Okay. So then we will make an attempt.
I will make the best attempt I can.
And we will provide an update by end of day tomorrow as to where we're at on that. And if, Ed, are we, is there... And if, Ed, are we, is everything ready to roll in terms of the abutter notification? Like everything's on standby and we can drop if, if Ashley certifies it complete? I don't think there's anything to take a vote on here.
It would be scheduling the hearing.
Oh, scheduling.
The 25th.
So we need to take a vote to put that on the agenda for the 25th?
Correct.
It has to be conditioned, though.
That's fine.
Based on completing the certification of completeness on time and all of the other dependencies going on.
You're saving.
We had already, but just to be clear for the board, this was the special meeting that was previously scheduled. Like this is not net new. We've had this on the calendar. It's a workshop, but we're going to, because there's so much on our docket. Frankly, I'm, I'm all game for not, for avoiding five-hour marathon meetings, so. Okay. So we're all clear on what's going to happen?
Yes.
Electronic gets delivered tonight. Ashley is going to make her best attempt to get that certification completed by tomorrow. If that happens and we get that reported out, Ed can drop the, the abutter notifications, and we will take this up on the meeting on the 25th. So I would like to entertain a motion to, and keep me honest here, to add the Street Legal LLC preliminary plan review to our September 25, 2025 special meeting agenda pending positive certification of completeness by Ashley tomorrow. Is that an acceptable?
In a time that can allow notice to be properly issued.
What Todd just said. Okay.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we move the preliminary planning review to September 25, as long as the requirements are met for submission of the proper master plan electronically.
Preliminary plan.
Preliminary plans. By, by tomorrow, and we're able to fit it on a September 25.
And it's, and it's certified complete, and we are able to execute the notice to abutters within the 14-day window, correct?
Yes.
All right. Alan has the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Cheryl has seconded. Any other board comment or question here? Before we take the vote, everyone's still good for the special meeting on the 25th? We will have quorum.
Yes.
That's a. That was a question, not a statement. Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, agenda item number five, BCP Properties LLC, major land development comprehensive permit application, request for waivers on checklist related to certification of completeness for preliminary plan. Items will be submitted prior to the decision on the merits of the application. This requested checklist items which the applicant requests be waived for this purpose are, and there are, there are quite a few of these, and.
I don't see Mr. Mancini here.
Well, that's problematic.
Or the applicant. So I was asking, hold this until the end?
Yes, let's hold this to the end. That is odd. Okay, we'll move on and come back to that. Okay. Agenda item number six, Awashank Realty Incorporated, petition for a minor subdivision preliminary plan comprehensive permit application. This is a minor land development to create nine two-bedroom condominiums, two of which already exist, with nine single-car garages and 18 driveway spaces. This is, the location is Zero Stafford Road, Old Stafford Road, Tiberton, west side of Stafford Road, east side of Old Stafford Road, plot 213, lot 134. It's R10, R120 zoning district, partially in a watershed protection overlay district. We will be discussing and possibly voting on a minor land development preliminary plan comprehensive permit application and requested waivers from local regulation. Time clock is set to 90 days, expiring on November 26, 2025. Who are we opening up to? Counselor.
Court Chappelle on behalf of Awashank, you know the players here with Mark DeMello tonight to my left, and with Bill Smith familiar to all of you. If I can start by giving a brief overview, and then I'll have the witnesses sworn in and start to highlight some of the requirements. This is a comprehensive permit for a minor division because it's nine units. Those of you familiar with the property over there between Stafford and Old Stafford, will see a duplex currently existing on the property. My client's been kind of trying to develop this since at least 2018. You'll see that that duplex was put on in an R60 at the time as a matter of right. There is, of course, a change in zoning from our, to R120, which happened on, in June 24th of last year, which created some issues. The condo documents were all filed at the time, so in the registry of deeds in the town hall, there is, that property exists as a condominium with the two duplexes legally existing, with the declarant being Mr. DeMello having the right to add the additional units. So the, they're supposed to know all about it. The proposal is for additional seven units, and it's to, I'm going to have Mr. DeMello explain it, but it'll be what would be three, three buildings, not counting what we call the silo, two triplexes and a duplex, and that's three and three and two, and then the silo. It's going to take a little bit more effort, but there was, based on an original walkthrough way back when, when this project was first discussed with the planning board, some of you are still here and some of you probably weren't here back then, there was a quest to try to save the silo as an architectural feature. So there is a proposal to put a single unit in the silo. All of the buildings are two bedrooms. That's designed by right. It's not designed to be 55 and over, but because of the two bedrooms, we found that the two-bedroom condos have a certain person that stays in them, and they generally aren't a big impact on the town without children. But they, there's no restriction against that. We're going to hear from them, and again, when we come back next time, to the extent you need an expert, but that we believe the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan in that it is a residential zone, granted now R120, but it's 100% residential use. It does fit the needs of the comprehensive plan in having different styles of houses. Everybody can't maintain a single-bedroom home with their own yard and their own things. So condominium living is important to the community and called out in the plan. There's also, of course, the low to moderate income component. Any proposal for nine units requires low to moderate income units, and you're going to hear that there are two low to moderate income units proposed in this development. They are the units five and unit seven, which are the two middle units in the duplexes. They're married with the same architectural integrity. They're made contemporaneous with the other construction, same materials, same quality, so it fits the criteria set forth under our state law. Lots of times you have to wonder what things are going to look like. This time, if you drive by, you know what they're going to look like because they currently exist, and the buildings will all match the existing duplex. They're going to add one more unit to it because it was designed to do that, but you'll have at least know both the architectural integrity, the quality of the shingles, the windows, et cetera. It has its own garages with parking, and with that, I think I'll introduce Mark DeMello, ask you to swear him in, tell you how we got here. Todd, I don't know how you want me to handle, originally there was an application done in June 24th, which was just one of those six or seven applications. Everybody filed to beat a deadline based on the application of the new law. There was some legal arguments on whether or not it was properly denied in time and whether it would be done. Mr. Romano and I basically have just agreed to go forward on this and to submit a legal argument just in case we needed it at a later date, rather than burden you on whether it was properly denied or properly continued. Is that fairly accurate?
I'm going to cut it even shorter. The issue really comes down to what zoning, what zoning applies, the R60 or the R120? And because it's a comprehensive permit application, it really doesn't matter if it's granted.
You're right. It's just, I think the time clock certified it to preliminary under one argument, that's all. But again, in R60, there were duplexes allowed as a matter of right and triplexes allowed as a matter of right, but not multifamily unless I think it was four units or more. Under the R20, there is not, and there were some, a couple of differences on 20% lot coverage or 10% lot coverage and some setbacks. It's a comprehensive permit as well, and I'll just hit some of the highlights, and Ashley has always put a nice memorandum together. They're not called dimensional variances, I guess. They're called modifications when you're in a comprehensive plan, but if you look at your zoning ordinance, now that it's 120, if we're proceeding under that, then the duplexes and three-family structures are not permitted. It would be one structure on a lot. You also have an ordinance that says when you have two roads, says it's a corner lot. So I guess we'll call this a corner lot. You'll figure out which road is the longest, and that will be your front. With the measurements here, they're, Bill will tell you, it's either very close or Old Stafford is a little longer than Stafford. We are asking to set Stafford as the front, mainly because the driveways are coming in there, and the two duplexes currently have Stafford Road addresses. It would really just change if you make Old Stafford the front, we need a, we need a 80, we need a small variance for a rear yard setback on the Stafford Road side. If you make Stafford Road the front, we need a variance on the Old Stafford Road sign. Under R120, a rear lot line, which is the opposite of a front lot line, has to be 80 feet, and the proposed building is 60 feet. So one of the variances or modifications called out for that you'll see in Ashley's memo on page five is that we need that 20-foot rear yard, and that we want to call Old Stafford Road the front instead of, I'm sorry, Stafford Road the front instead of Old Stafford Road. And the multifamily, which is not allowed in 120, but it is allowed under comprehensive permit under the state law. So with that, I would suggest two things. One, that you swear both of our witnesses in, and second, that you qualify Mr. Smith as an expert in civil engineering, as I believe he has been qualified many times before in front of this board.
All right. First things first, Mr. Smith, Mr. DeMello, raise your hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you. As to accepting Mr. Smith as, as an expert, it's board's prerogative, but as Mr. Chappelle has indicated, you have accepted him multiple times before.
I think we're fine with Mr. Smith, given his, his history with this body. Mr. DeMello, or Mr. Smith, or who's going?
Mr. DeMello, why don't you start with giving them an overview of this three-acre parcel and how long you've owned it and how we get to this design?
Well, we, we did the first two units by right, and then I forgot the bill inspector was in at that time, was it back 2018? And we talked about the distance on roads and, and the privacy of having the backyard facing Old Stafford Road. So that's how we came, became the front of the unit, being facing Stafford Road versus Old Stafford Road, for the privacy of the backyards and better traffic flow and things like that.
And the duplexes, obviously, are built. Can you tell me approximately what year you built those?
Roughly five, six years ago they were built. They went well, and we put them up, and this goes back quite a ways, and we were talking about doing 14 units at first, and, and I remember Rosemary saying, can you reduce it by one? And we, we kind of chuckled a little bit, and then we, we actually reduced it quite a bit from, from 14 down to nine.
That was really just an old conceptual meeting that you had.
That is correct.
Okay. But the current building that's built, is it fairly depicted?
It's a ranch, it's not a high-rise. It's just one, you know, one level, a house garage, house garage, everybody has a privacy. Behind every garage has its own private deck, so tucked in, so that everybody has their own personal private space, and it works out well.
And as a designer, doing the one-floor living, is that targeted for a certain age group?
Definitely over, you know, pretty much over 60 years old plus.
Now that we're all.
Yeah, I know, I got to keep pushing that age now, but.
But the buildings that you propose, other than the silo we'll talk about specifically, will all match the existing duplex, both in size, style, and architectural integrity, including the architectural shingles, the shingles and clapboard, garage doors, et cetera, is that right?
Exactly. Yes.
Like most of these developments, you're, you're trying to get them to, to look consistent?
Consistent, definitely consistent.
Now, originally, was there a plan to maintain the silo or to take it down?
Originally, we're going to take it down. Then we were asked if we could keep it as a landmark of some sort, of be able to keep it up, then we said, hey, let's just try to tie a unit to it, so this way we can keep, it always has to be maintained and always has to stay there.
And describe what challenges that, that has as a.
It's going to be structural engineer, it's quite a process, so it's going to be a challenge, and I can't wait to take the challenge on.
And I know we have.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
It's going to be a challenge because it's just because of the, you know, going to make sure you get structural engineering done. It's going to be quite the process.
My understanding from the plan, it needs to be taken down. The silo needs to be taken down in order to make room for unit nine?
Unit nine is going to encompass the silo.
It could be built around.
Around it or attached to it.
So the silo will come out as.
I did not read the plan that way. Okay.
I can't wait to do it. It's going to be a fun project.
Do you have a rendering? That's going to work.
No, I don't. No.
Has it been tested?
We're going to, whatever we need to do to make it work, we're going to do it. We'll have the professionals come in and test.
So two, two specific issues came up about the silo, some from a letter we received, and the first was whether or not some of the cement in the silo had asbestos, is that right?
That is correct.
And as, anything that's built with a building permit in a renovation or a retro has to be completely tested, and to the extent we can utilize it, it has to be done in accordance with the EM and the rules and regulations, and specifically the asbestos statutes on either encapsulating or making it safe, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, it would be safer renovated and encapsulated than it is in its raw state, sitting in the open, untouched at this time.
That is correct.
There was also a discussion about whether barn owls existed in the silo.
That is correct.
All right, but fair enough.
Fair enough.
What did you do to find out whether barn owls were in the silo?
We went up there this afternoon with a 40-foot ladder and took pictures.
And are these the pictures?
They were the pictures.
All right. I need to mark these for ID.
I would like to, please, do you have small ones more?
I don't think I do.
This one's looking down.
Can you give them electronically?
Yes, please.
Looking down.
What I'm going to ask to do is mark the four as a package. I'll have them identified as fairly, as him taking them and being fair representations, and then I will leave them with you and supplement with electronic photos so you have them for the record, so you don't have to carry these around. Is that acceptable?
Perfect. So four photographs taken today by Mr. DeMello, we mark as a vivid day reportedly of the silo.
That's correct.
The first one is the one I held up, was the existing duplex, so everybody could see that hasn't had the opportunity, if they haven't had the opportunity to go down there to see what it is, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. The second one is a full picture of the silo standing, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And that, the third is then a picture from the inside, from, one is from the top.
Looking down.
One is looking down. One is looking down, and one is.
Then was looking up.
Is that right?
That is correct.
And it's clean inside, except for a couple vines?
That is correct.
And from the ladder and the pictures and the position you put yourself in, were these taken, and do they fairly represent the inside of this silo?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any evidence of bird's nests or owl's nests, or did you encounter?
Nothing.
Any owls when you were there?
No.
More importantly, were there nests?
No nests.
Okay.
Mr. DeMello was not qualified to make the assumption that there's no owls inside of the silo. I was just going to say that.
I would think I'd be qualified, there ain't no nests.
Yep. We'll make that part of the discussion. We'll accept those as, as submitted.
Does the board want to see those photographs?
I mean, we've been getting, I didn't see the inside ones. It's probably helpful to just sort of send.
Well, I think what's most important as.
Do you want to start, Alan?
I think you are qualified to say what you saw in there.
That's correct.
And you are under oath.
That is correct.
You did not remove any evidence of barn owls?
No.
You have never, since you've owned this property, removed evidence of nests of birds of any kind?
No.
And on this day, when you took pictures this morning, you did it?
This afternoon.
This afternoon, you did it in a way where I said, photographs, so everyone can see whether there is or isn't.
That is correct.
Okay. And at least there, what, you didn't see any bird's nests?
Absolutely none.
This type of owl or that type of owl, right?
That's correct.
And you saw no owls, whether it's a barn owl or another kind?
No owls, no nests.
Okay. So have you done architectural drawings or renderings, or started the architectural process of how you're going to incorporate that silo, other than that the building's going around it and it will be coming out of the?
I have not.
Okay. Have you retained anybody to start that, so that we may have that by the next meeting, if anyone wants to see that?
Sure. Yep.
That is a signature, if you will, of this property, and you're trying to do something of quality, so that that is maintained.
That is correct.
All right. Now, you're currently, where are the driveways to the existing duplex units? Do they come out on Stafford?
They come out on Stafford Road.
Thank you. I looked for the entrance, and I couldn't find it.
Yeah. The number's right on the end, and a blue tag on the, on the post.
But the plan, as I understand it, is two driveways off of Stafford Road, and nothing out of Old Stafford Road?
That's correct.
Can you, can you talk?
Nothing on Old Stafford, but there will be three driveways.
Yeah, there's three. Yeah, I'm sorry, there is three on Stafford.
Oh, there's one to it.
Can you talk us through where they're going to be on that, or, or without a pointer or a laser, just so everybody knows?
Yeah.
Can I have Bill show us where the driveways are?
Can I all talk with this first?
I may not be, but I'm just trying to, it's up to you, I'm just trying to get it in order.
Currently, we have a driveway now that serves the, the existing two units. What we want to do is we're going to widen that, and we're going to bring that back out, so it'll be a circular drive, entrance in, entrance out onto Stafford. Here's the silo, the structure that's going to be built around that, and then there'll be a separate driveway into that to get to that silo. At nothing on Old Stafford, which is up on the top of the screen.
And the driveway serving the silo building is a single unit, two-bedroom unit?
That is correct.
That's a single-bedroom, two-unit? And then the other driveways, the circular driveways, will combine to serve the other eight units, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll get back to sightlines and those things when we get to engineers, I just wanted to point that out. Is there anything else? Did you encounter any other environmental issues on this site?
I did not.
Okay. And other than the integrity of the silo building, there's no other buildings that were, that were overly concerned with down there, have any historical value?
No, there isn't.
Do you remember the two large cement pads that are on the property?
That is correct.
Okay. What's going to happen with those?
We're going to take those back, to take them out.
Okay. Was that part of a recommendation?
Recommendation.
From the environmental?
That is correct.
I have to apologize, I have not looked at these plans, because I just received them as well as the memos today. And I did go out and look at the, tried to find the place. But where is the watershed mark on the plan?
The watershed?
Yeah.
So if you look at the back of Units 6, 7, and 8, on the, that would be the west side, that line that runs just beyond that, and it heads in a, I guess it would be northwest in a fashion, is the watershed line.
So of the nine?
Maybe the cursor on the laptop there?
I apologize, I'm a bit of a dinosaur. Oh, there we go. So the watershed line is right there. So we tried, tried to keep everything situated.
This line?
Yes, correct.
Dashed line right here.
That dash line that goes right up through, through there. We've tried to keep every, all of the structures outside of the watershed, with the exception of the silo, which is already in there, so that we minimize our impact in the Stafford Pond watershed.
So Mark, it was originally designed that there were no buildings inside the watershed, because we couldn't do that, is that right?
That is correct.
And then with discussions that it would be architecturally significant and a bit historical to try to protect the silo, we added a unit there, a single unit inside the watershed area, and had to deal with the environmental impact statement, right?
That is, yes.
The other thing that's at the silo is those two large cement barn pads?
Pads, yeah.
That are being removed. So the actual impervious area in the watershed is going to be lower post-development than pre-development, is that correct?
Is that correct, Bill?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you explain that, please, further?
Why don't I, why don't I just go to Mr. Smith then?
Yes, please.
One of the things we had to do, Bill, is get it, because of the watershed, is to get a specific environmental statement, is that right?
That's correct.
And in the watershed area, can you tell me approximately how many square feet that is?
So the, the structure will be 1,584 square feet in the watershed. The two slabs that are there now are larger than that, I don't have the exact number, but they are larger. So the, our net result of impervious surface in the watershed is reduced.
And that was one of the conditions that came out of the environmental board, that we made recommendations?
I, I think that was, that was intended to do that prior to us going for environmental permits. The original plan actually had, it looked almost like a stealth bomber, and it had the units that basically filled in that whole V-shaped area. Looked like heck. We figured that by breaking it up and adding a little bit more green space between the buildings, even though it forced us to have additional zoning relief required, it made for a better project.
Just as a matter of, of just procedure here, so, and Todd, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to look for a little bit of guidance here. I feel like we're starting to get into territory of Agenda Item 7, which is the E R S, the Environmental Review Statement. Should we keep those separate and distinct?
I think you can combine the testimony.
Yeah, I feel like they're just going to collide.
They have to.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many square feet is that section of this lot that's in the watershed district? That, that Unit 9 is in. So you have that line, right?
Yeah.
So it's on the top of that watershed line, how many square feet is that?
The, the total project is a little over three acres, and the, the area that's in the watershed is, looks like it's a little bit under one acre. I don't have the exact square footage, I can get that, but I don't, I don't have that committed to memory.
My memory's coming back. And that is, there was a point that was made, I believe, by a fire marshal, a previous fire marshal, when we were doing this initially, about going in there. And I'm not sure what it was. Has this been reviewed by the fire marshal, or because of the, the circulation and the density?
I don't.
There has been no TRC here.
I was going to say, that has not happened yet. It will happen. Ed is in the process of trying to schedule that meeting.
Okay.
And, and just so you're aware, you have a memo that has a lot of empty spaces, and there's a reason for that, and that is because I did not want to presume anything and draft you a memo prior to even hearing this application. Because we did not have a pre-app, and this went straight to preliminary, I gave you the framework for a decision, filled in what I felt was reasonably comfortable, so that as you're listening and hearing the application, you have that basic decision outlined in front of you, so that you're kind of aware of what we're going to be filling in. As you're talking, I'm adding, and as we get more information, we'll fill this decision out. But it just didn't feel appropriate to put a decision in front of you prior to even hearing the application.
My apologies, but I just got to think today.
No, no, it's a good question. We are going to put this in front of a TRC.
The same thing, my memory's coming back a little bit. And the same thing with the P A P, the physical alteration permit from the state will be required too for, you say, three?
Yes.
Okay.
As will the Riptie's permit from, from D E M.
We originally were trying to get the TRC report, and we had no intention of expecting that you would be voting tonight.
Yeah. There's no way.
Right. And we all understand that.
I, this, I want to make sure that we, the board is able to hear from the public, from the public hearing part of this, before the board dives too deep into comments and questions. So Mr. Smith, Mr. DeMello, are you guys done?
Well, probably not done, but if you want to take that public first.
Yep.
I certainly will defer to you.
Okay.
I'm going to certainly, I'm going to go over sightlines, traffic.
Well, no, 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 then keep going, I'm sorry, I thought you were all done. Why don't you do that before we go to the public here?
One of the criteria, for sure, is that not only does this fit with a comprehensive plan, but that we meet the criteria that we won't be a public nuisance or hurt public health and safety. And part of those considerations are not only the traffic and the ingress and egress on a public street, but surface water runoff, containment, always O W T septic, the availability of water. So I'm just going to walk you through some of those things and ask you to talk about them one at a time. First of all, the access would be to a public street, Stafford Road?
That's correct.
And are you familiar with things such as sightlines to decide where to put your driveways?
We've, we've looked at sight distance, and we have more than acceptable sight distance in each direction from each entrance.
So as an engineer, you look at a site, try to determine where driveways could be that would meet good engineering practices, or acceptable sightlines for safety and traffic for entering and exiting? I know it's only nine units, but still, for exiting and entering onto Stafford Road as opposed to Old Stafford Road?
Correct. And D O, Rhode Island D O T will also have to weigh in on that in, as we process their, their permit application.
Because it's a state road, is that right?
That's, that's correct. Both are state roads.
Do you have any concerns with the ingress and egress as designed in these three driveways, on whether they will create any health or safety issues regarding traffic?
We're, we're looking at adding eight units to the project.
Seven.
The typical residents that are there are going to be arriving and leaving at off-peak hours, so from a traffic standpoint, we won't be adding any burden to the, to the state highway.
Seven more units, total nine, right?
Seven more units.
All right. Into, can you tell us about the soils ledge, and how you go about designing where your O W T S or septic systems would be? The type of systems you've designed for here, knowing that D E M ultimately is the person in charge of deciding, or the entity in charge of deciding that they are adequate?
So we have done soil testing on the property. We, our water tables range from four to six feet below surface to seasonal high water table. We've, there was an existing septic system that serves the existing two units. We are proposing two additional septic systems to handle the remaining seven units. Those will be advanced treatment septic systems. We've applied to D E M. They're waiting for us to get our Riptie's permit on that before they will finalize their approval. I don't expect there will be any issue. Again, it's an advanced treatment system, requires a maintenance contract be kept in place as a condition of the approval. What's going in the ground will be cleaner discharge than a typical septic system would be. So I think we're, environmentally, we're trying to do a, a good job here, that's relative to the septic systems.
And with the water tables and the current system on the existing duplexes, any problems that have been reported to you since then?
No, no problems that I'm aware of.
All right. It's a condominium, so these common systems, unique to buildings, are all part of a condominium association agreement, and maintained through the association, and maintained through the monthly dues, et cetera, and replaced collaboratively by all of the units, according to the condo charter.
That's correct. Part of D E M's requirement is to make sure there's a valid condominium document in place for the continued operation and maintenance of the systems, as well as, because they're advanced treatment systems, they'll have to have a, an independent contractor come in and do the required maintenance on the service, make sure everything is working properly, and that's typically done twice a year.
With the systems as designed, and given the nine units that are proposed being two-bedroom units, in your opinion, is that adequately sized?
Yes.
Okay. And do you anticipate that there will be any issues regarding any sewage or leaking of those systems onto neighboring properties in any way?
They're, they're being, being designed in accordance with the D E M standards, and again, they're the advanced treatments standards, so what's going in the ground is, is cleaner than, than normal. So I don't expect there to be any problems, provided the maintenance is done properly.
And before we talk about the system for the silo unit, are all of the other systems located not only outside of the watershed area, but away from the watershed area? They're not on the boundaries like the buildings, is that right?
All, all of the septic systems are located outside of the watershed. The, the silo actually ties into the system and will, will discharge or connect into the system in the lower left-hand corner of your, your plan, which is outside of the watershed.
So there's no effluent or sewage into any system that's located in the watershed?
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Have you looked at the property and done topography mapping to determine the area in which surface water will flow?
So typically now, the lower portion of the site drains to the east. There's a culvert that crosses Stafford Road, and it, it accumulates there. When it builds up to a certain point, then it will flow to the east. We will continue to use that same drainage pattern that currently exists. The stormwater from the new structures and the driveways will go into a, it's called a storm scepter. It's a pretreatment device that's used for stormwater, to keep it clean, remove total suspended solids, so that what's going into the second part of that treatment system, which is Coltech infiltration chambers, will, will be clean as it discharges into the groundwater. Those Coltech chambers for the, for the drive, the main driveway and the new units short of the silo will be outside of the watershed. There's a small Coltech system that's serving the silo unit, and that's located to the left of the silo building.
Mr. Smith, just, this is an important part. Ed, can you, with Mr. Smith's guidance, actually point to those?
Okay.
Systems on the map, please?
Here's our, here's our silo building. There's the Coltech chamber that, that stormwater would run to.
Let's look at that watershed individually, right? Water that falls on that property now, pre-development, where does it go?
It goes in that direction, and then it heads towards the west, towards Stafford Pond. Basically, there's your dividing line right here.
And can you tell us how much water is going in that direction now, and how much water will go in that direction post-development?
Well, it actually is reduced. The numbers are in my drainage reports, and there is a reduction in the stormwater coming off of the entire site and into the watershed.
Other than the fact that it's less water, can you tell us if it's cleaner water based on the system that's designed?
Yes.
And what's the answer to that question?
I'm sorry?
What's the answer to that question? Is it cleaner water?
Yes, it is cleaner.
So this water system is not only designed to be less water leaving the property in the direction of the Stafford Pond, but also cleaner water, less and cleaner?
Correct.
And you have an opinion whether less water and cleaner water leaving the site is going to have a negative environmental impact on the town of Tiverton, or specifically that watershed?
I would say it would have a positive effect. The remainder of the units will drain, and the circular driveway and the remaining units will actually drain into this Coltech system. And we have the storm scepter on the drainage pattern that's coming in from the north, as well as the one that's coming in from the south. So that what we're putting, and that's the bulk of the water, the stormwater on the property, and that will also be cleaner, and that will infiltrate water into the ground instead of allowing it to direct runoff, overburden the culvert that crosses Stafford Road and then flows to the east.
So again, in this watershed, this shed that's on topography, that goes away from the pond, it is again, less water leaving the property and cleaner water leaving the property.
It's essentially the same water leaving the property, but it's being treated so that it is cleaned, so it is a cleaner discharge.
Who maintains the storm scepter?
That would be a requirement of the homeowners or condominium association?
Association, because we had a problem with a storm scepter in another project some time ago.
It would be on the condo association. It's also being reviewed as part of the Riptie's permit with the long-term stormwater operation and maintenance requirements.
Right, but it's the enforcement that I'm concerned about, and being so close to the watershed or in the watershed at that point, you know, I have agenda.
Okay. Again, there needs to be condo association.
Condo associations often have yours, mine, and ours, limited common, common, and my unit. I usually own from the walls in, the condo association owns from the walls out. That keeps all the buildings the same color, the same shingles, the same doors. The areas that are beneficial to everyone are part of the common plan that everyone is on the hook to contribute to them, that is those storm drains, the driveways, and those things. Things like your decks are often called limited common, meaning I'm the only one that uses them, but because they're outside and we want them to match, the association is responsible for collecting fees on an annual basis. Under condominium law, you have to file a plan that not only says you're going to meet your needs of the cleanout of those, and you're going to meet the needs of your plowing and your grass cutting, but you reserve each month, and you build a reserve, so that it's anticipated that in X years, when the roofs need to be done, the money is there. Many condos do a very good job at that, many condos with, you know, collected less with inflation than those things, but collectively, all condo docs then say, if that fails and the town certifies you and you don't have the money, then the condo association assesses all of the units, an annual assessment, to bring that up to any, so you have more than one person to threaten if things don't happen well.
So a similar question, who is accountable for the maintenance on the septic systems?
It would be the owner of the land, which would be the condominium association, which would be...
Also the association.
Which originally is the declarant until there's a certain number of units built, and then it's turned over. You know, the difference is if, well, I like to use the trailer park, where one person owns the land, and that's a moneymaker. I collect rent, I collect enough money to do all these jobs, but I make money. Condo association's goal is to break even, really, because they want to keep their monthly assessments down, and yet still have enough for the rainy day fund as it hits.
I have a question, and this is more, so going back to the water flow, is, you had originally said that the egress of water is to the east, so it goes into that drain, but then you said that it then is drained out, is it drained out in the back to the west towards?
I'm going to explain it, then I'll have him do it, but I think I can do it in layman's terms. Any piece of property may have a hill in it, and if it does, there's one watershed that goes this way, and one watershed that goes this way. That watershed is there, because water that drops on that land goes towards that pond. And that line is drawn, because where water drops outside of that, it happens to go away from that. So there are two different watersheds, not to be confused with the Stafford watershed.
Oh, yeah, no, and I understood that, I just wasn't sure, like, if it comes in from the east, is it redirected, or is it just redirected into the ground? That was the thing that I was confused about.
It generally follows that watershed line as the divide, so water to the south of that, or west of that goes to the west, east goes to the east towards the pond.
When you take those pads out, will that affect the flow, or is it flat there? It was part of the pond?
The intent is to match the grade that's there and to plant it with vegetation, so basically it's going to enhance the ability to infiltrate and to clean the water, as opposed to just running off on a flat concrete surface.
And we have town water?
So town water is available on Stafford Road. Town water serves the two existing units. When Mark was putting those in, he brought in, was it?
Four additional.
Four additional lines from the main. We're going to have a TRC meeting, there'll be questions about water availability. In the event that water is not, the town for some reason says, no, we can't hook up, then we will have to put several wells in to serve the units. There are some wells surrounding that property too, that were people who haven't tied into town water, so that's an option in the event that the town says no. We'd prefer to provide town water to the occupants.
Okay. What else?
From an engineering standpoint, can you talk about the build itself and what precautions are put in play, so we don't have dirt on roads, we don't have dirt running out into water onto any neighbor's property, and we don't have any negative impacts to our town?
If you see this funky-looking symbol here, here, and here where the driveways come out to Stafford Road, that's a construction entrance, it's a stone entrance to keep the sediments from being tracked out onto the roadway. We have compost filter socks surrounding the property to control any runoff spaced at our limits of disturbance. We also have an extra one that's placed down by the culvert that crosses over Stafford Road in attempt to prevent any siltation or sedimentation from occurring.
The driveways paved or stoned?
Driveway will be paved, yes, and right now it's gravelled. We've taken that into account in our runoff calculations. My feeling, and I talked Mark into it, was that there's going to be a bit of traffic with the eight units on that circular drive, and a gravelled driveway would not hold up very well on that tight turn. So we thought that pavement was a better option. Normally, we prefer not to, but I thought that that would be a better option for this particular project.
And I think I heard you say that that was factored into the runoff calculation?
That was factored into our calculations, yes.
And although we haven't gone to technical review committee, and we'll certainly hear from the fire department, did you plan that road so that it had both the width and the radius that's called for by the fire department to be able to turn?
So we've got the proper radiuses, we've got the width that we could use in the event that there is a fire, you have access from both sides in the event you had a pumper truck that was, that had to be set up. There is a hydrant that is just down the road on Stafford Road, so there is fire protection available for that as well.
And as of now, you haven't, you don't have a landscaping plan?
Correct, correct. We're working on that.
And we'll have that for the next preliminary. Mark, the landscape plan, consistent with what we just did in Portsmouth, can you tell them a little bit what the look is going to be with trees and bushes and?
Can you back up a little bit, please, back to the elevation? So my first question is, you have one...
Hey, Adam, could you just make sure that might concern?
You have one elevation line. Mind if I get up there and touch the screen? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Can you bring it back a little scale? What was that?
Sorry.
Need a millennial.
Oh, okay.
That is true.
Thank you, Ed.
There you go. Thank you. What does that say right there? Elevation? I don't know, it's 101. I can't see it here. 101, okay. So I guess my next question is, you've created a plateau, what looks like, we'll say, just for the hell of the right, you have a plateau here, right, 104. You have a new property contour that brings it up higher than the existing watershed line? Am I wrong? That's 103, you're bringing it up to 104?
Yeah, that's 104 back here. It's 104, it's going to push this way, so it's going to crowd.
So there isn't, the crowds, I can't see.
It's 103, right around 7, right around 7, 8, 9?
Yeah, so right off the corner of 106, so...
I've got a 104 here, and I've got a 104 here.
Plateau from here to the watershed line? I mean, typically, wouldn't the watershed line be right there at the precipice of that plateau?
So the intent was to basically take the drainage from here, that'll be above 104, and then push it this way.
Right.
So it'll be flatter coming out towards Stafford Road, you've got a steep drop over here.
You do.
Yeah.
Right, but I guess what I'm getting at is that watershed line almost changes now, like you're forcing that watershed line to change to the east by, I don't know, 100 feet?
Okay, it does move a little bit, yes.
Nice, okay.
But if you look at the total...
Potentially bring it into the septic that's going to, this is for, what's that?
It's going to get picked up by the driveway.
I mean, if this moves this way, which is what this plateau was going to create, is that going to interfere with this on the side of water treatment?
Well, there's grading around that septic system, so it's not in a depressed area where it's going to collect water. And water will go between there and the unit or around that septic system and work its way towards Stafford Road.
Can we make sure that's just Adam's concerns are addressed as part of the TRC discussion?
I certainly can, I certainly can.
Just so that there's added quick.
I think you'll find when you include the roof areas and, you know, and all of that being drained towards Stafford Road, you actually have less volume, or less land area that's contributing to the Stafford Pond watershed. But I will certainly address that at the TRC.
Yeah, okay.
I have a point of information too, and I don't know if our access AGS, so I don't know if our access AGS is how correct it is in comparison to the information in here, but when you look at this parcel with the watershed overlay, it's a lot farther in. So I don't know which one is the, I guess, your point of truth, but if you go into access AGS for Tiverton, there's your nine. I'm not sure how, if the other buildings are this size, how they're going to fit and not encroach on the watershed, and if you're increasing, you're starting to really inch toe. I don't know how accurate this is versus that, because this is online, but it is, that's concerning.
All right, I will confirm the watershed line is exactly, or what, Stafford Pond watershed zoning district is a line that's established, that's what's drawn on your plan. There may be some irregularities in that, but essentially, that pretty much demarcates the divide for the watersheds.
Any other testimony before we open up the public hearing?
I just wanted to ask you about the Riptie's and explain...
Can you explain what Riptie's meant to the audience?
Rhode Island Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit for any disturbance of over one acre of a site. We will be disturbing slightly over an acre with this proposed work, so we have to go to DEM Division of Water Quality, they'll review it to make sure that our drainage numbers work, that we provide adequate protection for construction, runoffs, prevent sedimentation and siltation from occurring and causing any environmental issues. So that's a permit that we've applied for, and we're in the process of trying to obtain.
Is there a timeline on, I mean, a lot of that's out of your hands, but...
We're still, I would say, 45 days out on that.
I think that's one of those permits that it's always, final is always conditioned on.
The state says you don't have to have a preliminary plan, don't have a final?
Not at preliminary, but at final. So it would always be a condition that Riptie's came to the determination as testified to here.
Yeah, okay.
I think you could open this.
Okay. Before the board chimes in anymore, why don't we open the public hearing here? So I will formally open the public hearing. We'll just wait for the tech swap out here. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Sir?
If, hello everybody, my name is Robert Shavs.
Hang on two seconds, please. If they want, we'll reconnect it. You good?
Good to go.
Proceed, we have three minutes, every person gets three minutes.
I noticed that the developer is asking for requested waivers from local regulations. What specifically are those? Stuff that'll save you a dollar or two? Can I have some waivers from local regulations? I could do some things in my backyard. I reject this, I see my town being ruined because of the greed of a select few, and you cannot, please don't allow these things to go through, or you will be the architects of watching a town be destroyed.
Did we get the name? Sir, could you, I'm sorry, I talked over you, that was my bad, could you just, your name and address, please?
Robert Shavs, Captain Circle, Tiverton.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Sir?
I just have a couple of preliminary questions. Excuse my ignorance, but I'm not too familiar with how condos work, but people, these are all for sale, right? There's no rental involved?
I'll direct your questions to me, I'll direct them to the applicant.
Okay.
First question, are they for sale or are they rented?
They're going to be for sale, but there could be one or two rented.
You're not planning on renting them, but you're planning on selling, but as of now, there was no, some condos say that only owners can stay there, and they're restricted as an owner from renting.
So will these be restricted to owner occupied?
I'm not sure we ever addressed that.
I don't believe, we can address that next time, that's never been contemplated here. They're more restricted, hopefully by the owner choosing people that will be compatible with this company. Again, designed as single-floor living, the people that are there now do not have children, correct?
Correct.
They're designed for that. They're designed for that kind of step down house.
Okay. Next question, sir?
And the unit with a silo in it, would that be a rental or would that be a sale?
Sale.
Sale.
Yeah, sale. And is the, so the owner will own the whole building itself and apostle of land? Is that how that works?
Generally what happens with a condominium is you get your unit and you get a one ninth interest in all of the common land. And the town will send a single tax bill for the land that the condo pays, and the town assesses each of you for your individual property unit. So you'll get the nine personal property house value taxes that each person will pay individually and the one global land fee that the condo association will collectively pay.
Are you following that answer?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you for that. So, uh, so the, the owner of the silo unit would be the one to tell their insurance company, homeowners insurance, that they have a silo in their home?
This is getting kind of far afield of what your charge is here, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's outside of our purview.
But how, how would that work?
Again, I mean, that's not a consideration that the board needs to take up as part of that, so, I mean, it's an interesting question, but not pertinent to our deliberation.
I think most importantly is the CO that the certificate of occupancy that your building inspector has to put forward, and on any unique project with a silo, I guarantee that's gonna include structural engineering and plans, and if it ends up a unit with the silo that can be built and a CO is given, I don't, I haven't personally seen insurance companies look behind that. It's either a valid build, obviously if there's a diving board off the end of the silo, they wouldn't allow that. But as long as the windows are properly done, like, like any other building, it'd be no likely to fall out of that silo than you would any other second story building.
Okay.
So the silo wouldn't be any, wouldn't have anything to do with the condo association?
The silo would be a part of a unit, just like your upstairs loft in your individual building. It will be owned merely and occupied merely by the one person that owns that unit.
Okay, no offense, I've got one final question. If, if, if the owl came back to the silo, would the owl be considered a low income?
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna move on here.
Ron Potvin, Captain Circle. They've talked quite a bit about runoff to the west and into Stafford Pond. I'd like to hear a little more about runoff to the east, especially on the east side of Stafford Road into the neighborhoods and wetlands on that side of Stafford Road.
Okay. Mr. Smith, can you address the runoff to the west?
As part of our stormwater design drainage calculations, we have to demonstrate that what's going across the road does not increase in volume and intensity. I think our numbers do that. We're also going to provide a cleaner discharge, so I think that there'd be no impact to any of the properties to the east or to the wetlands to the east.
Who's next? Sir? Sure, yeah, come up to the mic. I just, I saw your hand first.
I talked about the Stafford Pond.
Sir, can you just announce your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, Joe Peruzzi, Captain Circle.
I talked to, name and address, please.
Joe Peruzzi, Captain Circle. Okay, talked about the Stafford Pond watershed, but this whole thing encompasses the South of Tupper Pond watershed. Those drainage areas you're talking about are all in that South of Tupper watershed. What were we doing to protect that? And I guess the question I have is, those drainage areas must be designed to handle a certain rate of water, I mean, one inch per hour, two inches or whatever. What is the rate of, how are they, or what is, how they designed? How much water have they designed? And I've got one more question. And if the, say it's one inch of rain per hour, I'm just throwing a number out, and if we get two or three inches of rain, we get a heavy rainstorm, where's the excess of water gonna go? Because it's not gonna be filtered if it goes, overflows. So it's gonna go across Stafford Road into, you know, South of Tupper Pond? So that's my question.
Mr. Smith?
So the, the storm drainage system that we've designed is gonna be relatively expensive, sorry, Mark, but it's, it's designed to attenuate the peak flows, to provide a cleaner discharge. Our storm drainage design, we have to analyze storms from a one year storm up to a hundred year storm. The hundred year storm is, somewhere is around 8.2 inches per hour. We have to do the analysis for, you know, from one inch up to the 8.2 and make sure that our system works. So we do try and take into account the, the larger storms as well as some of the smaller storms.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Michelle Dunn, 66 Elk Drive.
Could you just speak a little louder?
Michelle Dunn.
You can pull that mic down.
66 Elk Drive. I do have concerns about the water as, runoff as well, because this is a picture of the condo across the street, the duplex, and this is the water that sits there after the rain. It's on the east side.
Ma'am?
So.
Can we have that photograph?
Yes, you may.
Fantastic. Why don't you show it to the chairman first, Mr. Gerlach?
Please don't trip on that. Just before you continue, Mr. DeMello, is this your property as well?
I'm part of the French Farm as well, yes.
Okay.
We'll mark that photograph as neighbor one. Start with that.
I do have more other things. So I am concerned about that, even though they're talking about the water. We all know sometimes it looks great on paper, but as you can see, that's a concern. Also, where the driveway is going to proposed for the silo on Stafford Road, there is a storm or a drain like in the road with like the granite around it, and it's right in that spot where the driveway is supposed to be for the silo. So I'm wondering how that drainage will be affected.
Okay.
Okay. And also, there are stone walls to, that are in the north end of the property, towards Old Stafford Road, and I'm wondering about, will those stone walls be protected? I know we had a conversation about that. Also, we were set, they were saying that the people who will be living there will not be traveling during peak hours, and I'm not sure how they know that. You cannot discriminate somebody, so if a young couple wants to buy the house, more than likely they would be working, they would be traveling to peak hours. So that would add traffic to it. And also, to just talk a little bit about what Roseberry said about who's responsible for the septic. So the nine condos there, that's not a lot. So if the septic fails, and yes, those people would be assessed, they would have to pay for that. And that's happening in a condo already off of Stafford Road where the septic is not working and the fees are exorbitant. So I think, you know, it looks good yet, somebody's gonna check it, but who monitors that? Are they really checking it twice a year?
Okay. Those were a lot of questions. Here it is, and I'm gonna try to recall from memory and ask Mr. Smith.
Okay.
So if, if I forget one of them, you can keep me honest.
I will.
All right. Do you wanna start with the drainage?
Can we start with this picture? Did you do this project across the street?
No.
No, I did not.
But you, but I can ask, Mr. DeMello, you were involved.
That is correct.
And back before a lot of these underground chambers to store water, we used retention ponds that were validly approved or rain gardenss.
That is correct.
This is the approved rain garden designed to take that water in big storms.
That is correct.
And actually, we put water into that as part of the approval.
All the dump boats go into that area right there.
This isn't just.
There's two different areas that discharges into them.
It's not randomly a collection of water. It was, now again.
Designed for that.
Though a lot of times we now do it underground instead of above ground.
Correct. We have a deeper water table, we can infiltrate it directly into the ground. We do that, or we do some sort of a surface impoundment area to infiltrate the required.
But this isn't, this isn't a problem, this is a design.
I didn't design it, but yeah, we, we certainly do design rain gardens quite frequently. And supposed to, the water is supposed to dissipate within a 24 to 48 hour period after the rain event.
There's actually a rain garden designed on this property, is that right?
We had a rain garden designed for the first two units, and that was, that was approved.
Okay. So drainage for the single unit, unit number nine, there's a, there's.
There is, there is infiltration.
On Stafford Road right now, there's.
Like where they drive ways proposed, so I'm wondering how that impacts them.
So, so where the driveway is gonna, you're talking about the culvert that crosses Stafford Road?
There's a driveway for silo. Where it meets Stafford Road is currently a storm, stormwater drain.
And our driveway is going to be to the north of that, so we're not gonna block that driveway?
It'll be off to the side a little bit, okay.
We'll be slightly to the side of that.
Okay.
All right. These stone walls, I don't believe that we're gonna, there's some stone walls at the intersection of Stafford and Old Stafford, and we're not proposing to do anything to those, to those walls.
Great.
Let's see. As far as the traffic flow, I, I know some of Mark's other projects, we have some more retired people than working people, and that's why I made the statement that I bought that. The traffic generated would be off, off peak for the most part for the development, but we can look into that and, and see. But, but you're, you're on a state highway and there's, there's no traffic issues within that, that area, just from personal observation.
And generally, the one floor houses with two bedrooms are not now occupied by children, nor is it our target.
I, I think the target audience there is the older married couple and have, they have a guest room.
I think I get four sets of these in different areas, and I don't have one child limited one, nobody under 18 live in any.
And some of these people at least would tend to be older in step down one story houses, and they have a chance of being retired, which doesn't get you out at eight in the morning in home at four, which is what you mean by peak traffic.
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
And responsible for the septic system, I think was the last question, and that would be, again, there's, a maintenance contract with an outside provider is required to inspect and maintain those septic systems. It's a responsibility of the Condominium Association to, to, to pay for that service. It's a condition of the approval of the septic system that, that be done, and hopefully.
And DEM also regulates, so if a bunch of condo owners tried to ignore the fact that there was effluent on the ground, the same DEM that would come and try to mandate that you fix your system or shut you down immediately and require pumping, will do it for the condo association. The difference is they'll have nine people to, harass is a terrible word, go after then, then the one that might be in your single family house, and by condo law, some type of budget and reservation, reserve account to get things done, and if it's not, the ability to pay for it and assess the condos individually, which is a little bit more power than they have against you individually, frankly. Same fines and assessment, but they don't necessarily have a, a bank to go after or to take nine of you and say, one of, someone must have a conscience to get this thing done. So there is, it's a little bit more teeth than a single family, in my opinion, but the exact, but all of the same safeguards that you have against your own homes.
I mean, that home is only two years old, so maybe that water retention thing is intentional, but it does not dissipate in 24, 48 hours. That's there for a while.
And unfortunately, that's a separate development, that's not.
But the water fit goes under runoff. That was my concern, going under the river.
Okay.
Ma'am, just one minute, please. Did you take that photograph?
I did. I'm not an expert.
No? No, I don't expect you. When did you take that photograph?
Uh, March, beginning of March.
Of 2025?
Correct. So it's not like it was in the spring when it was rainy, right?
And do you know the address of what that photograph depicts?
Uh, that's the number. It's Stafford Road, I don't know the number. I can get it for you, though.
Mr. DeMello, do you know what?
Really, I don't wanna say the wrong one. I forgot what it was.
926 and 928.
926 and 928.
958. Everyone's saying 958.
Sound correct to you, ma'am?
Right.
Does that sound like the correct address?
I, I rarely would have to check it.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can keep that photo?
You may keep it.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Do you wanna give it a number?
Neighbor one.
Do these have a basement or a slab? And will there be any blasting?
Question is, basement, slab, any blasting?
They're gonna be mostly basements, there might be two on crawl spaces.
And would that require blasting in order to achieve the basement or crawl space?
Possible, but the reason is just because they've been going, it's gonna be identical homes, but why spend all the extra money putting a full basement in for an affordable one? Maybe like a house garage to match, so we can put the utilities in the, the back part of the garage.
Are they pre-filled?
Now, these will be stick framed. The, the other two were modular.
Okay.
The other thing I wanna say is that several years ago, well, a few years ago, George from the sign shop knows that I'm historic, right? Not me, but you know, what I'm, what I work in. So he knew I was with the Historic Cemeteries Commission. So he had, he walked with me in, on the back of the property where, because he grew up there, and if you go on Old Stafford in back of the silo, there, he said that there was a cemetery there with stones that were not vertical, but that they were laid out, and that they, he wasn't sure if they were still there or not. We tried looking for them, but there was so much golden rod, we couldn't see it. But apparently there, he said that they were marked, but they could have been flopped over once upon a time, but I just was wondering if, you know, just bringing that to your attention, if in case you find something in back of the silo towards Old Stafford, if there's, you know, they, he said there were fairly large stones that were.
Sure. Mr. Smith, can you?
Is it where the slabs are? Is that what you're talking about?
They weren't slab slabs, I mean, those are different.
No, no, the concrete slabs where the old barn was.
Yeah, but there's not, they weren't that, they were actually gravestones.
No, but were, were they close to that?
Yes, yes. That's what he thought, yeah.
Just, it's, if, if there was gonna be a cemetery, probably wouldn't be right where the barn was for the facility. It might be back over here towards Old Stafford Road where we're not doing any, any work.
Okay.
But we'll keep an eye out for that and see if there's anything that looks like it. We did the soil testing in the TOPO, the survey, and we didn't see anything that, that looked like that, but we'll keep our eyes open.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Proffin, hang on two seconds. We'll come back to you. Let's get everyone a first round here.
John Baylow of 29 Elk Drive. Turn it in, real simple. Will there be any communication with Fall River regarding the Watupu watershed?
So that, Ed, keep me honest, the city of Fall River has been notified.
Correct.
Okay, and also, I'm just curious, how's the water gonna be made cleaner with this system? I'm just curious of its specifics.
Can, can you give a, a brief layperson overview in terms of the technology and how the water comes out cleaner?
In terms of the septic system, the acoustics inherent top of my.
Was it the septic?
I meant the, the rain, the rain drain.
The surface water.
Okay, so, so the water will be collected through the gutters on the house, there'll be, and also there'll be a berm on the driveway that'll discharge it to catch basins or a storm drainage system that goes into the storm scepter, which is a separate device. system that goes into the storm scepter, which is a separate device that actually has a vortex in it. It causes the trash and the suspended solids to settle out before it would go into the infiltration system. The infiltration system is a series of chambers surrounded by crushed stone that the water is discharged to. They're designed to handle a certain volume of storm water. Once that volume is exceeded, then it would meter out to the west side of the property and go through the existing culvert that's currently there. We've designed our infiltration system so that it handles the increase in water coming off of the new impervious surfaces.
So it's the removal of particulate as opposed to, you know, chemical, biological, whatever? Just the removal of particulate, right?
The particulate, there's not an extensive treatment system, a chemical treatment system that's being employed. It's being, it's more to get your trash, your suspended solids, any sediments, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for a first round before we go back? Sir?
Bob Crepo, 271 Fairwood Drive. Question is, I understand, if I hear this right, that they were going to be looking for variances on top of this in this plan?
Dimensional variances.
Yes, modifications. If you want me to go through those.
Yes, please. Is that the question to just run through?
Well, I know variances are considered hardship, are only considered for hardship. And so my real question is, why would you design a plan that requires variances when there's no need to?
Bill, I'm wondering if it would be helpful to just very quickly give an overview of comprehensive permitting. It sounds like maybe.
Yes, I would agree. So comprehensive permit, I'm going to let you do that.
Okay, yeah.
But the intro is that this is a comprehensive permit application, and because of that, it affords leeway on certain things. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Yes. There's a different, there's a different standard. It's correct that it is a hardship standard under normal circumstances for a regular application, but this is a comprehensive permit application under the state law that requires that municipalities have 10% of their housing stock as low-to-moderate income housing. That law establishes a different permit process for applications that include at least 25% of the units as low-to-moderate income housing, and as part of that application process, it is a shortened streamlined process before the town, and you are restricted in terms of what you can look at for approval or denial, and they are different standards than if it were a conventional application that was before you without low-to-moderate income units. The law essentially is designed for an application to exceed or need relief from the provisions of your regulations. So it is, comprehensive permits always seek relief. That's the way the comprehensive permit process was designed, and it's in the state law, and the town is subject to that law and has to look at applications that are filed as comprehensive permits differently than they would look at conventional applications.
Does that answer the question? Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. Anyone else for a first round here?
Sir?
Good evening, everyone. Richard Ramirez, 914 Stafford Road. Got a couple of questions for you. First thing, the, we talk about the clean water, right? The runoff and all that. What happens when it's all flooded? You're still going to have all the, you know, dirty water anyway going through it. Now, when you're going on both sides of Stafford Road, you're saying one side is going to go towards the pond on Old Stafford. What about across the street? Like, my yard gets flooded every single time after that new development you guys built right next to it, to my house. The, I have like rocks, you know, as well, all down the ground. I get water like you wouldn't believe. My yard, I never had it before. I've been there for seven years. So that to me is like, it's a problem, I think.
Okay, so let's try to clarify it. So help me understand again where you live in relation to this.
So 914 Stafford Road?
I'm sorry?
914 Stafford Road, which is like right at that split with Old Stafford Road is in Stafford Road itself, right across the street to the left. I get all the water right there.
Adjacent to the duplex on the other side of.
The duplex on the other side of the road.
On the other side. And I know that duplex, right, is wetlands as well.
Yeah, which is not, not.
Not the ideal place to be.
Well, it's not the application before us tonight, like.
Right, correct, but I'm just trying to see, you know, because now we're trying to develop somewhere across the street from it, but it's going to affect my end as well.
So I will try to reiterate what I heard Mr. Smith, the engineer on the project, say, but sir, I welcome, I heard that, well, I'm going to let you answer. I don't want, like, I heard less and cleaner, so.
So where the runoff from this project across Stafford Road through the existing culvert is about 400 feet or so from your property?
From the property.
So it's, and there's actually, there's a finger of wetlands across the street that kind of comes up towards Stafford Road. So any water that crosses here is going to find its way into that wetland and continue. That wetland goes further towards the east, towards the pond. So I can't see that anything that we do here is going to add any water to your property. Again, we have to design our system so that we don't have any increase in water. I can't say I'm going to cure your water problems, but we're not going to aggravate it.
And if I could just reiterate what I heard you say, and please correct me, is that your models factor in a large spectrum of rainfall amounts, one-year, five-year, 100-year amounts?
That is correct.
Okay. 100-year storm amounts, which was eight point some odd inches an hour.
Thank you.
Does that, okay, great. First round? All right, Mr. Proppin? Is wrong? Did he leave? I think Mr. Proppin left. Okay. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Final call. Any other public comment? All right, we will close the public hearing portion of this. Let's open it up to board comment.
Sure. Closing it permanently or just for this evening?
Just for this evening.
Okay.
Just for this evening. Thank you. Board, open it up. Comments, questions that haven't been addressed thus far?
I have a question.
DA?
I do see that we are at approximately 25%, which is required for comprehensive planning for the units. Would you be willing to add another unit to the low-income roster? Because now we're just kind of chasing this low-income drag in in town?
No.
The, well, you may want to hear why people often don't.
Oh, I mean, I can't, it can't hurt to ask, and I get it, you're doing the love, but we're just going to keep running into this issue.
That's why 25% is better than the 10% minimum, so you are gaining on the back.
Yep.
The problem is, it's so hard from a guy that does this for a living, when people come in and say, I want to take care of LMI, and I'm going to build 10 units. If you go to Humphreys, and they're your brother-in-law, you can't build this unit for what they sell for, and every unit is lost. So you have to, because these are limited to the amount, 330 or something last time I heard, but you can't build them for that. And the net loss you need to absorb by trying to get as many market units to the ratio, and it's much, much tighter than I think. Everybody says, well, those two units must be free. They're just not. There's still have septic and water and materials, and it gets very difficult. I don't know how any other part of the country, a guy builds houses for $300,000 and sells it for $300,000, when that seems to be the material cost in Rhode Island.
I don't, I don't want to deviate into a sort of a debate on LMI and state law, but thank you. Other board questions? Dick?
I had a question about the, at the time, the environmental review statement checklist was submitted, there were 12 items pending that were primarily feedback and comments from other organizations and things. I only saw, I saw a letter back from Conservation Commission recommending, but obviously you could possibly approve a checklist that has so many pending items. It kind of guts the whole environmental review process, and subsequently it would be hard to, the environmental review application on here is in support of the comp permit. So if you can't get the ERS, I don't see how you can get the comp checklist.
Yeah, so.
And those are the applicants.
Yeah.
That's right. That's the support of that.
Building official sign.
Can I go through some of those for you?
Sure.
I see number 45 was pending, and that's just a determinational action letter from the building official that this fits into zoning, and I think you're going to find that they have to issue a letter that says that residential can go in residential under a comp permit if it meets the criteria, but that shouldn't affect anything environmentally. The number 46 was the pending Tibbetson Conservation Commission letter, which you do have now. The RIDM wetland section is that RIDM always has to approve both the RITDS and the individual septic systems, and by state law, you'd never have those first, or you don't need those first at the point.
I need to interrupt, but can I ask for a clarification? Are we talking about an ERS checklist or the subdivision application checklist? Because I think court is reading from the.
ERS. They may be looking at you, and I assume this is in your hand, right?
Yeah.
Is that the date on that?
Dick, can I just see what you're looking at?
It's pending.
What's the date on that? Remember, this was a.
No, that's the ERS.
Yeah, this is, I don't see a date on it. Yeah, this is the ERS checklist, because that's what I'm looking at on screen right here.
And the applicant is on his hand.
It says pending on a bunch of things.
Well, it not only says pending, but it says that they're filling this out in support of the comp permit application, so.
Well, I don't want to speak for you, but I think what is intended there is the reason they're applying for the ERS is because they have a pending comp permit in front of the board, and so they have to apply for the ERS because of the comprehensive permit that's in front of you. They have to go together because of the watershed. So they have to apply for both.
So an ERS is required when the development, when a development is within a watershed?
Yeah, I understand.
Does that answer your question?
No.
The two seem intertwined. Right, and so I think that's noted. Any other board questions?
Do you have any comments?
Yes, yeah, comments, questions, yeah.
Before we move off of that, I think is, I don't want you to think, Dick, that we're just ignoring that you've raised that issue. I think that we can look at the ERS checklist. We can look there. I mean, there are going to be things on your subdivision application checklist that are pending, because we can't force the applicant to provide them at this time, but we can go back and look at those and make sure that if there are any still pending items, that that information is brought to you as part of the application in front of you now before you make a decision, as long as it's not something that is related to a state requirement that we can't make them provide at this point. I don't, I didn't want to just glaze over what you asked.
I understand. I just don't see how.
Yeah, but to be clear, we're not rendering a decision on preliminary tonight, right? So, because there's too much open here. Okay. Adam, did you have?
Yeah, I'll start with this one house that's in the watershed for Stafford Pond. I mean, you need three acres, right? It's 130,000 square feet. They're proposing a house in about 40,000 square feet within the watershed. Also, like Bill and I discussed earlier, this protection overlay line looks like it's going to move to the north and east with the potential to have five units within the Stafford Pond watershed. That's number one in the negative. We have a pattern of residents who live in proximity to his developments with issues of water runoff impacting them in a negative way. That's, you know, not being addressed. I mean, I think the last guy that just stood up here, Ramirez, was that his name?
Yeah.
I didn't.
All right, you know, we said that he lives to the east, and, you know, this water's not going to, I'm sorry, he lives to the west, and this water's not going to impact him. All right, so he lives to the east. Bill said, well, this water, you know, it's going to go in a particular direction. It's not going to impact you. He, you know, talked about a direction that it is going to go in. What about those people? And they have a legitimate concern that this water is going to impact them because it has impacted neighbors in the past. Let's see, I have, I'm going to bring up, you know, what we talked about earlier, which Mark thought was funny, is the great conservation need of predatory birds. Mark, what does a barn owl nest look like? What does a barn owl nest look like?
There was no nest at all.
What does it look like?
There is no.
Right. What does a barn owl nest look like, Mark?
What does a knop look like?
Right, you wouldn't be able to identify.
I was amazed that there was even a horned nest.
You wouldn't see it.
I started to identify.
You wouldn't see it, but I mean, we just, you know, this entire development goes against, all right, I'm going to stop right now. I listed a couple of negatives, and they're related to water runoff, so.
I want to make sure that we are capturing the comment in the feedback, but we're also allowing the applicant to respond in kind so that we have a, I'm not trying to dismiss it.
Fair enough.
And in fairness, I'm not being a wise guy. I will try to look up and tell you what a barn owl nest looks like.
I know what it looks like.
But I can't, if you do, it can't look like nothing.
All right, so we'll back up to the concerns that, you know, a few people that popped up here brought up, and that's water runoff, and also the watershed of Stafford Pond, and the fact that you have the potential to have five houses within it.
So I want to address the density. So the density is tied to the fact that it's a comp permit, and comprehensive permitting allows for a density bonus as long as the development meets certain requirements. So that's why you're seeing seven additional units on this one R120, right?
But that's not what I brought up. I brought up the fact that you have houses that are going to be in our drinking water's watershed.
So there's an open action, there's an open action item to clarify the line of demarcation for the watershed that was abundant from the GIS map, which is not lining up with yours. So we have to, I would ask that that is addressed as part of the TRC as well. Like, we get that clarification on what is the line and how does that line play out on the plan in terms of where the units are slated to be placed.
And how any part grading moves or changes that line.
Correct. As far as the water runoff from other developments, Mr. Smith, correct me if I heard you wrong, but you are not the engineer for those other developments?
I was not.
Okay.
He's not, but the developer for those other developments are here, is here, and.
Yes, I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny that. I don't know if Mr. DeMello.
There's been issues with those developments and their runoff.
I'm sorry?
There has been multiple issues with runoff from developments from DeMello's, you know, construction sites and finished projects.
What we have to hold Mr. DeMello here to, though, is not decreasing the amount of runoff, either in the watershed, on Stafford Road, or anywhere else. So far, the testimony of Mr. Smith has been that he will decrease the amount of runoff everywhere. We will also have Nathan, our, the planning board's engineer.
Confirm that number.
We will also have Nathan, our, the planning board's engineer, confirm that number.
And that also has to be permitted and verified by DEM.
Right.
Right, as it did two years ago, one of those houses is two years old. I'm sure it went through the same process.
I understand that it's remote, how we can be skeptical of this, unless you have contrary evidence or a reason not to believe the testimony of Mr. Smith and interview our engineer. I don't know what else to do.
Did you see?
Yeah, I got it.
I'm certainly open to suggestions.
Anything else, Adam?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have anything?
Can I bring one thing up that makes sense? Your engineer did see it, and I saw that he would have liked to have more information. And we will get that to him prior to the next meeting. He said specifically that he wanted to see the evidence of how deep the water table was and where the ledge was, because that would help him formulate an opinion about the infiltration of water and the surface water runoff. And we just got that and have taken actions to prepare that for you. So you'll have that as well, okay?
And so, Ashley, would that also be covered as part of the technical review committee scope?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be helpful if we can coordinate the submission of that document with enough time to review it before the TRC so that it can be discussed at the TRC, and then Nathan can provide you with an updated report.
Over that this week.
Okay, we'll go Rosemary and then VA.
Okay, I have, I've heard about the Conservation Commission. You go to them for the ERS. I don't have anything in here, and I apologize, but I just got this. I don't have any letters or anything.
It's buried in there.
It's buried?
Yeah, it's about a dozen pages in.
Okay, I apologize, but I can't, I can't review. I know you went.
So it's after the checklist?
This from the environment, one back to you?
No.
Okay, I'll find it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Was that your?
It's about 15 pages, it's half a reaper, okay?
Yeah.
Most of that's the condo docs, unfortunately. If you sort that out, it's a lot easier to flip through.
Rosemary, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, VA.
So just back to Adam's point. I think if you could have a biologist or an ecologist look at the silo, because the barn owls, they only nest until about mid-August, and then they still live in those spaces, so you actually have to look for their poop. I know that sounds weird. So to Adam's point, you wouldn't know if they're living there unless you can see. It's not a traditional, like, oh, I see a bird's nest. So that could be just a confirmation from a professional that there is not the home to a barn owl. That would be fantastic.
We can get you that.
Yes, Cheryl. Oh, Janice, please, can you use the mic?
Is it on? What, what are the dimensions of that silo?
Dimensions of the silo? I really don't know the exact number, I'm taking the gash roughly 16 foot, straight across.
Diameter.
The diameter is 16 feet.
What's the height?
Oh, the height, roughly 40 feet. Could be a little taller.
Cheryl?
I was wondering if we could have the engineer, Nathan, here at the next meeting that we hear this plan. I think we all have a lot of questions about the watershed, Stafford and South Watapa, and how the water is going to flow. And I have concerns about the unit and if there's additional units that are going to be in the Stafford Pond watershed especially. But I am concerned with, with both. And I'd like to have an engineer here to go over the plans and to be able to answer our questions.
Ashley, is that something that we can coordinate? Okay, great.
And do, maybe do a site visit, too, rather than GIS.
Would you be open to coordinating a site visit? Allowing a site visit for the board?
Sure.
Or Nathan, too.
And the engineer, anything?
Sure. Okay.
But we can, if you want to do a site visit as a board, set a date right now so we can properly notice it.
Are you prepared to check calendars?
Well, it's on the site, we can, but it's all I have.
Mr. DeMello, Mr. DeMello, any dates that are off the board for a site visit?
I don't think there's any, too many for me, except for Thursday morning with certain duties.
I, I will say this right now, if it's during the week, I can't be there because of work.
Mr. DeMello, any prompt of an individual member coming themselves to look at the site?
I, I don't have an opinion.
You don't care?
I could meet him there, somebody could meet him there, too.
What's the-
Kind of walk around it.
Where, I know I can walk down Stafford. I know I can walk on Old Stafford. I know I can walk around the silo. The rest of the site is-
It's well overgrown.
Is it brushed and grown?
Right.
Yeah. Is there a date you cannot do, Mr. Smith?
I'm going to be unavailable 23rd through the, the second. But any, any other time I can certainly make myself available.
Okay, so September 23rd through October 2nd is off the table.
October or September? Oh, we are in September.
We are in September.
I know.
Already.
And the next meeting is what day?
October.
October, we have, September 25th is our special meeting, and then our October meeting is 7th?
Yeah, we'd go to the regular meeting, right?
Is that the TRC, too?
No, it's not the TRC, they're trying to-
The Sept, the Sep-
Okay, 15th. All right, so Monday, September 15th is on the table. Rosemary?
It's getting dark earlier now.
Monday, the 15th?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, sunset's happening. By that point, we'll be close to 7:00 on sunset, so. 4:00 is on the table, Monday, September 15th. 4:00, Monday, September 15th, I will not be there.
Who, who would you like there?
It's an open invitation for the board, but-
No, I mean, obviously the board, but who would you like from us?
Well, I think Mr. Smith, Mr. DeMello. I think that would be.
I mean, I have, I can do, be there, but I don't need to be, I don't believe.
Okay, so we have Monday, September 15th, 4:00 PM, for a site walk on the property.
He done, where do we meet on Old Stafford Road?
Do you want them pulling in the driveway? Maybe parked off to the side?
Yep.
We can let the tenants know.
Go to driveway and off to the left.
On Stafford Road.
The driveway that is on Stafford Road. When you pull in, you can go off to the left, it's grass that's sort of in front of the silo.
I was looking at Old Stafford Road.
You, you're not going to be able to access from Old Stafford Road unless you're bushwhacking. Okay, Monday, September 15th, 4:00 PM, site walk. Ed, can we send out a email tomorrow that confirms that with the board and Mr. DeMello and Mr. Smith?
Yep.
All right, we've got that covered. Any other comments or questions from the board? My turn. So, just super quick here. So the document that we had in our packet dated August 18th, 25, which is the condominium document, the top of page six cites 13 units in up to six phases. And then the bottom of page six cites 13 residential units in two total buildings. So I know that's not the plan that's before us, so that piece of documentation seems out of whack.
Because it's the condo?
That was the original one.
So, let me explain it. That's clearly not what is in-
No, I know, but that was handed to the board.
What happens is, we had to give you the condo docs that were filed. And when you do condo docs, you have to tell all of the people that are buying into the condo, the original two duplex owners, what might be there. And you can do less, but you can't do more. So those reference to Clarence Wright's on some plans that were more.
Okay.
And obviously, if you did more than that, then if you bought a condo, you'd have a standing to say, this isn't what I bought into.
Okay, okay.
But that has no bearing whatsoever on this. You've just seen it because it's part of the recorded docs.
Okay, does that actually get updated? Like, when the seven units are built and you're bringing in other people with that?
The condo plan, right now, the only thing that would be filed would show the duplexes. Then it would show the approvals and the units itself as an add-on.
Okay, all right. I had a number of other questions, but they were conveniently answered through other people asking those questions. So I am good. Last call, board comment, question? Ashley, anything from you? All right. I'd like to hear a motion, entertain a motion to continue this preliminary plan application, comprehensive permit application to our October 7th meeting, where we will also continue the public hearing. We have a motion, anyone second?
Second.
I heard Alan. All those in favor? Okay, we're good. Just, just before we end this agenda item here, I would be remiss if I didn't add a little color commentary based on the social media traffic that went around this afternoon. I'd like to really ask the public to make sure that we're dealing with facts and not getting sort of misinformation or disinformation out there. I took time before coming to the meeting, there was a concern around bulldozing. And I took time before the meeting, I drove around the property three times. I went on your property, I walked, I took pictures. There's no bulldozing. There was, looked like some brush had been gra, like brushed down, like grass had been mowed out.
Today, so we do the pictures.
Yeah, so I just want to, this board is as concerned about development in this town as everyone else. We have a set of rules and laws and regulations and processes that we must go through. We applaud the public being active participants in this. My ask is that we are corroborating things, that we are doing our best to put factual information out into the world here. So, that's that. All right, let's move on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we actually have to talk about the ERS here. Okay, so I, I'd like to, I think we discussed a lot of the tenants of the ERS today, unless you guys feel like we need to go into anything. So I'd like to also entertain a motion that we continue the environmental review statement discussion to our October 7th meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion? Ooh, I heard VA first. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number eight, ECC Eagleville LLC. This is a concept plan review for a major land development project. Proposed construction of an 18,000-foot, square foot construction office and tradesman's center located at 222 Eagleville Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island. It's the west side of Eagleville, plot 105, lot 601. It's an industrial zoning district. This is a concept plan, so this is the applicant able to come before us, talk about it, and the board is able to offer feedback. Is the applicant actually here?
We received a request from the applicant's attorney that this be continued to October 7.
Okay.
Is that possible with how that meeting is stashing up?
It's a concept plan. Yeah, it's probably light. It's probably light, it's a tradesman's center. I'll entertain a motion to continue this agenda item to our October 7th meeting. VA with the motion, do I have a second? Cheryl with the second. Any discussion? I don't have a full view of the agenda yet. Ed, do you have a view?
Right now, the new public hearing for Stafford Farms, the, possibly the preliminary plan for Longplex, depending on if they actually get their stuff. We have it on the 25th, it won't-
Yeah, so that could be a carryover if the timing doesn't work out.
Vital, will be on for their preliminary plan.
I don't think so.
Yeah, no. Okay. Not here this evening to request waivers.
I don't know what happened with that. So they don't have a complete application for us to certify as complete.
So-
We've been, we've been holding.
You are, uh-
I thought it was off.
We've been, we've been, we started the review, but we're not, we haven't completed the review because we knew they were coming before you to request waivers. Now that they didn't, I assume they're still not coming, we'll just, we'll complete our review. But it'll be certified and complete because all of those checklist items are missing.
Okay, so that's off.
So that's off, and then also Friendship Farms is not going to be on for October. I don't think so.
We have the-
We have some room.
For sure. Okay, great.
Procedure on ECC, there's a time clock of September.
Yeah, can we, that's a great catch.
That's not right.
Thank you.
What?
It is right, but statute does not require.
We will, we will. Just, let's answer this question about the time clock.
To get, they don't have to do concept plan, it's by statute.
That's always been there.
Okay, well, now we're following statute. So what's your question, Rosemary?
So is that, is that, it says 60 days, September 9th, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the statute is-
So today's the deadline.
Mr. Eggers, they're going to come for the concept plan October 7th.
Yeah, but-
They're not pushing their concept plan. They don't get anything out of us not making a decision on a concept plan.
Do they need, well, wait a second.
Other than the right to not have to come for concept plan review.
But I want, I want everyone to understand what we're talking about. So it's a, it's a pre-application. There is no certification of that pre-application. It, it is a concept review before you, there are no decisions rendered, you're not bound by anything, they're not bound by anything. But the statute does say that if you do not hear their cons, their pre-application within 60 days of it being filed, they can skip it and just keep moving. It doesn't, I don't think they want to do that.
No, they don't want to.
There's no default approval or anything like that?
There is no approval of a pre-app.
It's just a concept plan.
Pre-apps don't get approved, so-
We never had a time clock on it before.
Excuse me? I didn't hear your comment, Rosemary.
Concepts on the usual applications didn't have a time clock on it.
I understand that.
It's not a time clock for you to render a decision, because there is no decision to render. It's just a recognition that if it's not, if you don't hear it within the 60 days, then they don't have to, they're not subject to having a pre-application, they don't have to have one. Which, there's very few applications left in the law that are even required to have pre-apps anymore because they just keep taking that away.
Which is a whole nother ball of wax.
Yes, it is.
But we still have to take a vote to move this, to continue this to the October 7th meeting. We had a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this one?
Yeah, I think we should push it to November only because we need to catch up on the eight-page agendas.
This is eight pages, Dick, because of all the waivers.
The list of waivers.
Vital, so, I don't know if that's-
You know, it seems like we never, we always have part of the previous meeting carried forward, and we're loading the 7th already.
Well, it does sound like this.
It felt like there was space.
Coming up seems like there's going to be some space, yeah.
It felt like there was some space, no.
It's going to be, things could get added to it at this point, but-
Exactly.
Take that to expiration.
No, I think we're done.
Nothing to be added, too late.
Oh, so, okay, so that is actually a good thing. Okay, great. Oh, so, okay, so that is actually a good thing. Okay, great. All right, owner, let's move on. Agenda item number nine, Highland Ridge Farm LLC, Thomas Chase, concept plan review. Proposed development of a 15 to 30-acre commercial agricultural farm for fruit and vegetables. This is located at 536 Highland Road in Tiverton, east side of Highland Road, plat 310, lot 112. This is an R120 zoning, whoo, R120 zoning district. This is a discussion. Here we go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to propose a farm field being built.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know you. Are you Mr. Chase?
I'm Tom Chase, yes.
Okay, there we go.
I am the owner of the property. I own Highland Ridge Farm, and that's the LLC that owns the property.
Could I just ask you to move that mic a little bit closer to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Could I ask you a question before we get started?
Sure.
Can we add an explanation of, is this a merging, I know the application talked about creating two more lots that were going to be merged in with the existing? Is that an agricultural thing or...
There is no merging, no.
It's a single lot, lot there.
It's one lot.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, your request said something about you want to create two more farming sections and merging. You can't see that on the plan. I mean, it didn't, I couldn't find what those plans showed. What part of that lot you were talking about?
So, what, so that's an open question on the table. We need clarity about sort of the lot, the lines, any divisions. So, do you want to present your case and try to make sure that you cover that topic for us, please?
I'll try. The 90 acres has a couple of aspects to it. One of the aspects is that 16 and 1/2 acres of the property is under NRCS restriction, Natural Resources Conservation Service easement. And that is for hay fields only. It can also be used for farm animals, raised farm animals, but it's, what it's being used for right now is what it's going to stay as, which is hay fields. The hay fields have been seeded last fall, and they have not been cut because they're going into seed, and then that is going to be harrowed in, and then we'd have a decent hay crop next year. To the south of that is an area along, let's see, Main Road, Obogomash, Bud, and goes over to Daniel Church. That hole on your plan, it shows as that red area. So, we have one, two, three, four sedimentation basins, and then the area outside of the sedimentation area is going to be lowered, leveled, and then the top soil that was taken off of that area is going to then be replaced onto that area. So, we're going to store all the top soil off in, in this top field right up here. This top field right here.
Okay.
That's the storage area, and from there, inside of that pink, purple area, I'm not exactly sure what color that is, that will be the new farm, new farm fields. Right now, that area is steep.
So, Todd's going to be pulling this up?
Oh, good, good.
I admit, I'm having, I had a real tough time trying to follow what the heck is going on here. So, perhaps, could I just, Mr. Chase, could I ask you to back up just a little bit?
Sure.
Maybe we could try to point to some of these things, because I know you have a copy there. You're trying to point to it. I don't think anyone can see there.
Okay. So, this is where the new fields, new fields are going, right over here.
And is that all the dark purple? Is that the area that you want to clear, or is it the area behind that dark purple?
The dark purple is the edge of the fields.
Okay.
This is, this is one of the sedimentation ponds. There's a sedimentation pond. There's a sedimentation pond right here, and then there's a sedimentation pond over here. All of this area, once the, once the property is, once the ground is leveled, the sedimentation ponds will no longer be effective. They'll be taken out, and they will be used as farm fields. So, I'll page...
So, from a layman's terms, like everything's just going to get flattened for growth?
Yeah, leveled.
What is, what is, what is the process to flatten?
Take the top, take the trees off, take the trees out, take the top sale, top soil off, store that, take the granite that's underneath the top soil and remove that.
So, there's blasting and quarrying and then backfilling?
Correct. There's also cutting of material.
Okay. Okay, keep going. Well, I'll save the mic.
Um, yes. So, then that creates, so this area over here, which is part of the level area, is, those trees are going to be removed. That top soil is going to be conditioned, and then that's going to be more field in there. Right, yeah, right in there. The wetlands are going to stay the wetlands. The top area, this area right in here is a field already. And then this area in here, there's a laneway, and there's wooded area in there. That's going to stay that way. That's right in here. There's a little pond right there. It's about a quarter acre pond. That's a field right there already. That is wooded area all in through there. And that is all wooded area also.
And, Mr. Chase, your entrance to all of this property is off of Highland Road, just past where the...
There, that's one of the entrances. There's an entrance right there, and that comes in, it goes around the barn, and it comes up by a path right in through here. Right about there, yeah.
So, is there anything more to the concept besides clearing, removing top soil, storing that, blasting, backfilling, creating more fields?
No.
Okay.
Now, that existing field looks like it's outside of your marked property boundaries.
That's correct. It's, it's, it's not necessary to level that.
Okay.
This, this site was a rock quarry since the 1930s.
Yeah, but I mean, so where you were indicating what was already a field, is that part of the whole lot?
Yes, it is. It's, it's part.
Okay, because the orange line supposedly is defining the lot.
No, no. Yes.
Yes, this comes, this is still part of the lot, so it's all of this, right, and we sort of lose it here. So, this is, this is not part of the lot.
That's not the lot.
This is not part of the lot, like this is, right? So, this is inside. I just want to clarify one thing Mr. Chase said. He said it's been an operating quarry since the 1930s. He and I disagree about that. There's, right now, it is not an operating quarry, and there's pending, there's pending litigation concerning that. Okay. Fair, Mr. Chase? Fair enough?
I don't really, I didn't really hear what you said.
I know. I know. There's, there's a dis...
Not that I wasn't listening, I just didn't hear.
There's disagreement in the fact that it is, has been, your statement that it has been an active quarry since the 1930s is in question because of open litigation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's true.
I'm sure there, is there anything else you would like to present?
Off the notes of the memorandum from this week, there's only one existing building on the property. I'm using only the existing driveways. I'm removing granite. The soil will stay on site.
And you're referring to Ashley's memo?
Yes.
Okay.
The memorandum.
Which the board has a copy of.
Yeah, okay, good. It is a commercial site, since all farms are commercial. I, in, in one of your comments, the applicant, the applicant approached the building official to obtain a permit for earth removal. I never wanted to get earth removal. It was only granite.
But, but I thought I heard you say that you have to remove the top soil.
The top soil is going to stay on site.
But that's, I mean, you're moving earth.
I'm going to move it, yes. It's going to, it's going to move from one area to another area of the property. It's not going to be removed offsite. It's not going to be sold. It's going to be used back when I get the property leveled.
Okay.
It will be used to cover that section.
Still an earth disturbance, though? Yeah.
It is a disturbance, yes.
What your permit would be required for?
It is a disturbance.
But didn't you, didn't you say you were going to remove the granite?
Yes.
Isn't that quarrying?
Yes, it is.
So...
It's a lot for, for building farmland over the top of granite is a substantial project. I mean, the amount of dirt you take off is not going to be anywhere near what you need to put back. This is going to be a massive hole, and it's going to take you 20 years.
So, I, I...
This is not you wanting to put in farmland. This is you wanting to sell stuff.
I want to read for the record an email that we received from Howard Cook at DEM that came to Ashley on September 4th, because I think it's extremely pertinent and tied to sort of the comment that Adam is making. Says, Ashley, "The Division of Agriculture has had numerous conversations with Mr. Chase regarding this issue over the years. While Mr. Chase has engaged in legitimate agricultural activities on the property, the Division of Agriculture does not consider removal of the granite a quote agricultural operation as defined in Rhode Island general laws. We have been asked by Mr. Chase if the removal of the granite to create agricultural fields is exempt. I and others have repeatedly told him that the granite removal is not agricultural in nature, but the subsequent creating of fields may be." As you, as is indicated in 2018, Mr. Chase submitted a Ripley's application to DEM for the granite removal. An associated wetland permit was submitted as well. At that time, the department determined that the proposed work was a surface mining operation. The permits were sent back as deficient and never followed up on by Mr. Chase. The bottom line is that the Division of Agriculture does not consider the proposed surface mining to be an agricultural operation. I will say that this feels like sort of a sheep in wolf's clothing a bit, that this is a means to quarry at the end of the day.
This is a means to take my property and use it in the best possible way that I find to use it. As a granite removal site, that didn't work. As a farm operation, I think it's valid. Everybody else in the world can not agree with me. Doesn't matter. It can be, and it will be, used as a farm property.
So, we have the matter of the granite to deal with there.
I have the matter of the granite to deal with, no matter what, on this property. I am, I'm not proposing a 300 or 500-unit housing complex. I'm proposing a farm. I'm proposing a farm to DEM Ag, and DEM Ag stated to me that if you're doing that to create farm fields, we'll set, we'll help you with the farm fields, but they won't help me with the removal of the granite, which basically is what you just read.
Yep.
So, I'm doing this to create farm fields. So, I guess, whatever it takes, that's what it takes.
I think, I don't, I don't want to speak for the entire board, but I think at the surface, there's concern about this.
I'm sure there is. I'm sure there is, because it's a concerning property.
It, there's a tremendous amount more detail, and it sounds like Ashley and others have been trying to get more detail from you on this, but that detail has not been forthcoming. In the absence of, of even a bit more detail here, it's, it's difficult to assess even the concept plan, in my opinion.
Well, that's why I'm here, sir. I'm here to try to describe what it is that I'm trying to do.
Sure.
So, if I can, what you have in front of you or what is up on the screen is not an application to you for a farm field. It's a Ripley's permit. Those pink lines are contour lines. They are so close together that they look like one giant line, and that is 70 feet of elevation in those pink lines.
So, to put it another way, there's...
We don't have a plan that shows us where the farm field is. I've asked about where these, this is a commercial operation that will distribute agricultural products across New England. I've asked where are these trucks getting packed? Where are the trucks coming in? Where are the trucks leaving? How many deliveries a day? I have none of that information. We don't even have a plan that shows a location of a farm field. We have a Ripley's plan that he's pointing to and telling you this is where agriculture is going to happen. I don't know how you respond to that. You, you can only respond to the information that you're given, and I've asked repeatedly for these things, and we kind of got to the point where we talked in circles until I said, how about we just go in front of the planning board? Because I didn't know what else to do.
So, on your point, as far as distribution, pack up trucks from the fields when the vegetables and the fruits or whatever it is that is going to be grown, pack them up, and they leave.
Are you going to be running the farm operation yourself, sir?
No.
What is your plan for operations?
My plan for operation is to start with a small field, approximately four acres, maybe five. Get that leveled, get that reseeded with hay, condition the soil, and then when that's ready, which is about five years, four years, maybe five years of hay fields, then convert that over into either fruit or vegetable, and then move on to the next section.
Yeah, go for it, Dick.
Based on those contour lines, what's going to happen to the back of these people's lots? It looks like you're going to drop, you're going to create a cliff.
That will be steep, yes.
That's her, that's going to be a heck of a drop that you're going to be out of there.
It's 25 feet off their back line minimum, and then there's also a fence line that needs to be set up there.
What happens with, like, I don't know, that begs the question of like runoff and all of that sort of like...
Well, that, you're going to have to have somebody come in and look and make sure that's stable, because if that drop-off's happening, the, the properties that are up on that hill, if you, in essence, pull that out, the whole back of that hill...
Then when the blasting is going to take this right in there.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't even, we haven't even talked about the blasting required and how much feet of granite. and how much feet of granite needs to be removed and the impact that that would have on the surrounding area. Like, that is gargantuan.
I got a 6,000 questions, but I'll start with a couple. You said some of those walls are 70 feet tall of granite?
That's a, the, the, that starts at about 170, the contour line at the, adjacent to those properties, starts at about, it's actually higher than that, it looks like it's actually, it's hard to tell, because the lines are so close together that you can't-
The high point is 187.
About 180, maybe?
187.
At that limit of disturbance line, but when you get down to that last line in, you're down at 100 feet.
How many years will it take you to blast away all that granite?
I do not know.
All right, and what are you gonna do with the granite that's being blasted out?
Um, remove it.
Sell it?
Sell it.
So, it's a quarrying operation?
It's a quarrying operation until it becomes a farm.
Yeah, well, it's 70 feet high, how many feet low do you have to go before you can fill that in with topsoil in order to grow something? Uh, I mean, it, it's a quarrying operat-, I don't know how old you are, I know myself, if I started a 30, 40-year project, I wouldn't finish it. I'll put it that way. So, it's a quarrying operation until it's not. Is that correct?
It's a farm operation that needs to be quarried.
Okay, but you just stated a project that's gonna last, honestly, probably past any expectation of being around to finish it. So, it's a never-ending project of quarrying with a hope of a farm. You said you were gonna do it yourself, so-
No, I said I wasn't going to.
Okay, but, I mean, what is the plan for this? I mean, it's, you're talking a 20, 30-year project to quarry that much granite? And what about all these people that live there? Every single day, is there any blasting in their backyard? I mean-
No, this, so about 80 feet of the top is fairly soft granite, except for a few areas that are knobs of granite that need to be cut. So, it's not gonna be blasted, it's gonna be cut.
Okay, not be done in 15 years.
But I'm not even, I'm not even into that for quite some time.
But the quarrying starts immediately if you want to level it?
Yes.
But that's, that's the problem.
That's the problem. It's a quarrying project with a hope at someday becoming a farming project, but you're asking for a farming project.
Which needs five years of haying before you can get the soil to a point-
Correct.
-where you can go and diversify your crops. I mean-
I think I made my point.
So, even if you build it all in in one year, it's six years, and that's not realistic. And it'd have to get through-
There's, there's no way that we could approve a plan for a farm, even as genuine as that is, knowing that there's years and years of quarrying that needs to happen before the conditions on the ground are such that your intended farm operation could even begin. Like, that is quarrying being masked under the guise of farming.
So, if I could, I think there are, I think there are two, two things that I can think of that would be very helpful in terms of information, that would get, that would at least give the planning board some kind of understanding of the viability of this. One, how much rock is coming out and how long is that gonna take?
Quantifiable.
Two, how much dirt are you gonna be able to reserve in comparison with the amount of dirt that you're gonna have to truck in to fill that hole? My guess is that they are so astronomically-
Out of proportion.
-out of proportion to creating a farm field, that that will very quickly show us that this is, it's just not viable. The, the plan that's in front of you is the plan that went to DEM for a Ripley's permit, that DEM said to Mr. Chase, "This is clearly a surface mining activity, and we need more information on your Ripley's permit," to which it, nothing has happened at that point. So, DEM has recognized this as surface mining. I think the amount of rock and the amount of dirt that are necessary to come out and come back in are very indicative of the viability of the project. I don't know what the answers are.
Yeah.
I can level guesses, but we don't have that, we don't have that information, and I think it would be very useful information.
I, I would concur. So, Mr. Chase, I think it's imperative that we get that factual information to come before the board in order to have a more thorough and substantive discussion on a concept plan here.
Well, two points. Most of that property is covered with about two feet of topsoil, plus or minus. Some areas, there are pockets where it's five feet deep, some areas, one feet, one foot. So, to take all of that material and store it, and it's going back onto where it came from, pretty much, allows maybe 10 inches, 12 inches of cover for the entire field.
Unfortunately, we need some hard data-
Yeah, yeah.
-there, like, I can appreciate your back-of-the-envelope spitballing, but that's not gonna cut it for this board to be able to give you substantive guidance on this, let alone figure out if this thing is viable to begin with.
Well, I came to this board since 2016 with a 40-law subdivision, 20-law subdivision with 350 units of senior housing, a five-law subdivision, a one-law subdivision. So, now I'm coming to you with a farming plan. I don't know what else to do with the property.
I, I, I wasn't here when you came before. I, I don't know how to answer that question, aside from perhaps that should have been thought through before the purchase, but again, like, I don't know. But this is really, I, I don't think, I'll speak for myself, and I'm gonna sense the rest of the board here, is that this, as presented, with such lack of detail and facts and data, is difficult to even debate for any much longer, and I am gonna cut it off because we have other things to get to. We need more facts. And I can sympathize with the situation you're in, in terms of like how to use the land that you've purchased, but blasting for a decade to backfill and create a farm that's gonna take six years to manifest because of soil, like, that's a tough pill to swallow for this board. So, my ask is that, I think Ashley laid it out rather simply and straightforward, let's get that information, come back with some maps and some diagrams that help us understand that in more detail, and if there's updates from DEM in the process, that's, that's bonus too.
Well, there aren't many options left for me, except for a comp plan. So, I think, I mean, I wanted to come here in front of all of you and tell you, "I want to build a farm. Doesn't matter how much granite I have to take out of the, the ground, I want to build a farm. That's a beautiful piece of property, I don't think it deserves to be a comp plan, I don't think it deserves a whole lot of anything. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property."
But perhaps a conservation easement is somewhere in that equation.
I think comp plan is, is, is the best bet.
So, I will, this is a planning board, open, public meeting, so I do wanna, before we close this out, see if there's anyone who has a brief set of comments here. I'll give it three minutes. Three minutes each, please.
I don't even need that. Deb Janik, town council, and I just want, for the record, for any of you who are not on the planning board, how many times this came before the council, the neighbors had to endure the blasting of the granite, they had to endure-
There was no blasting on the property.
They had to, they had to endure the trucks, the dust, the noise that went on all day, every day, and there were a lot of complaints. There were a lot of neighbors who were impacted, so I just want that to go on the record when you're making decisions. Thank you.
Sir?
Hi, I'm David Cooper, being on with 60 acre lane. I'm one of those impacted neighbors. I spent about 300 hours last year learning about the history of Highland Ridge Farm. Mr. Chase has got, he's not under oath here, he has a very interesting history, it's an interesting, his lawyers have some interesting takes on the law. I think it's important that you know that that property, that, that 70-foot wall he's putting in, for those of you who are new, that's going right up against the property of the people who fought him when he wanted to put in a subdivision in 2018. He ran an illegal quarry, very clearly illegal quarry, right against that middle property there, that I live two football fields away, and with all the windows closed in my room, he ran a gravel crusher every day, all day long.
This guy has given this same speech for I don't know how long.
Mr. Chase, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let the gentleman complete, he has his three minutes here, please.
So, Mr. Chase, my understanding is, was brought in by the Drones to broker a sale of this property to the land trust after the Drones had sold off all of the surrounding properties and left no redway into the property, except for some small farm redways. So, there was no way to develop the property, and they knew that, and they brought him in as a Realtor, and he bought it from them instead, saying that he could develop the property. And he has not been able to do that. I won't, you know, sort of bore you with the entire story, but the last thing I'll say is that the redway he's putting in there, I believe that that was already beachoned in 2018, and you can certainly go back and look at 2018 and what happened there. But yeah, this is the exact area that he has been quarrying illegally and just generally creating nuisance for the neighborhood. We, I lost 300 hours on the lawyer, so that's a lot of money for me. We as neighborhood spent tens of thousands of dollars with this problem, he has sued the town every which way but loose, and the town spent tens of thousands of dollars with this problem. He's a Realtor, he should have known he was buying, he should have known he was buying a piece of property that, and then, oh, by the way, he bought a working farm. It's a farm, you don't have to mine anything for it to be a farm. It's got plenty of really nice fields, and then this area that you can't, no, can't farm. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You got this, Richard.
Okay. Anybody else?
Sure, how are you? Name and address, please.
My name is John Mello, I live at 60 Budway. He's Mike Todd. He's a good guy. John Mello, I live at 60 Budway. The property that he's talking about, that he wants to do, quarrying, is right in my front yard. And he's been blasting there, digging up the yards, makes nothing but a mess. And he's done all around the backside of our property. We've been in a lawsuit for about 10 years, 'cause he wants access to the driveway to get into the field. The court chaplain has been supporting us. The right-of-way is for us for, for further development to the west. And he has no other access in there.
Anything else?
He's tried to quarry and stuff, and he's been doing that, but it's been seized by the town for, I wanna say about four years now.
Okay, thank you.
So, our house is that middle-
I'm sorry, name and address, please.
Eric Mallow, 60 Budway. My husband.
I didn't hear that.
Erica Mallow, 60 Budway.
Thank you.
My wife. My house is that house right in the middle. And there is a steep drop-off right behind the house. And if he decided to blast that, my house is going down.
You're here?
Um, no, right in the middle, the big hammerhead.
The big what?
Hammerhead.
Down, down.
Down, right there. Right there.
Oh, okay. Where are the handles?
Yeah. And besides that, losing all the trees and everything, the wildlife are already everywhere, 'cause they have nowhere to go, 'cause it's already taken down so many trees. So, that's my big concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. All right, well, I think we covered a lot of ground here. Takeaway is that in order to properly evaluate this, we need some more data, in fact, as Ashley articulated. You're more than welcome to come back here when you have that information, and we can have a more fact-based discussion on this. But I think the consensus of this board is that at this time, this is, this is difficult to wrap our head around and difficult to support in the absence of that.
Well, it was, this is a concept, so that's the concept that I have.
And we've given you feedback on that concept, which is our job at this moment. Okay, thank you. All right. We're at 10 o'clock, so we're gonna try to move expeditiously here. So, item number 10A, Abigail Estates update on notice of violation letters. Todd, do you want to give the synopsis of that situation?
It's going to help me, too. The synopsis is that they have come into compliance, they've done everything that we asked, they've submitted as-built plans, they have the granite markers out there for you, Rosemary. They, they provided to the town and to Prism all of the necessary information that they have to, so Prism and whatever the electrical company is can now connect to the streetlights and energize them.
That's great.
Ed, what did you hear from DPW, please?
DPW, the paperwork was collected, submitted to Rhode Island Energy on August 22nd. Prism needs approval from Rhode Island Energy after documentation is reviewed to report. And after that, they'll complete the final stage and activation.
Okay, great. It finally feels like we've gotten that one over the hump. So, thank you to all for the diligence there. All right, 10B, discussion regarding September 25th, 2025 special workshop agenda. So, we already know that if the, everything lines up, we will have the preliminary plan for the car vault, but this is our opportunity to just quickly talk about other items of the agenda. This special workshop was initially intended to allow us to play a bit of catch-up on some of the important but time-consuming discussion-heavy work that we started earlier in this year. So, can we cover off?
Sure, we can try to do this. Obviously, the design standards, we want to finalize those, we can put those to public hearing. Those are subdivision regulations. We also need to take care of the checklist for the subdivision regulations, which we talked about last month.
Yep.
Then going into zoning ordinances, Ashley and I, Ed have been working on ADU ordinance. We need to revise and fix the substandard lot ordinance, accessory structures that may be a little bit, that's tied to the ADUs. We may not have a complete or final, or what your eventual final will be on accessory structures, but it has to be amended to fit with the ADUs. Pools, did you tell me?
We have that, yep.
Pools.
Pools, swimming pools.
Swimming pools.
Swimming pools.
Highly important.
Yes.
And animals.
Animals, that's right.
Animals and pools.
And then we need to do something about non-conforming uses as well.
Okay, so that's robust. Ed, remind me, how much time do we have on the 25th? What's our start, target start time?
Starting time is at 6:00.
In the evening?
In the evening.
Okay, and we are here.
Yep.
6:00 in the evening here at the library. Okay, great. I know that's a lot of work to prep, so thank you guys ahead of time.
It's not done yet.
No, I know, I know. But it's important, this sort of housekeeping, that's, I mean, this is sort of stuff we need to do to keep the lights on. It's important work. Okay.
One quick question on the checklist. Are we setting a date for a public-
At the special workshop?
Yeah.
Is when we set that date, I anticipate, for checklist subdivision amendments, as well as the design standards.
All right.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, great. Update on the University of Rhode Island groundwater study. Ed?
Hey, we're doing well with the sign-ups. We got, right now, we're up to 34 new participants from our previous participants that were already signed up, which we had about almost 10. So, that puts us at around almost 50, almost up to 50 participants, which is pretty good. We're at like 44, and 50 was the goal. We're gonna have our workshop with you. We're going to have our workshop with URI on Thursday here at the library, 6:00. All the participants are going to be coming in and getting their samples. They're going to let us, URI is going to let us know pickup and drop-off times. Then they're going to collect the data and, you know, give it back to us. So that's what we're anticipating right now.
Can you just catch me up on what this is?
Yeah, so this is a long, yeah, so we, after Trish Hilton had done a lot of legwork on this, we signed a contract with URI and their Department of, I believe it's Geosciences. And they are doing a groundwater study similar to what they've done in other communities to assess sort of the overall viability of the amount of groundwater that's out there. Right, so they have used GIS mapping to identify target geographies in town that they believe, based on their scientific experience, will render the best data. And so we've been doing a recruitment phase to, we sort of identified those geographies. We identified the addresses that were in those. Yep, we sent outbound letters. We've actually had two workshops with URI already. We sent the letters out, that's the formal recruiting phase that has wrapped up. We are now moving into the actual study phase. So the workshop on Thursday is URI. So notifications have gone out to the people who have been confirmed to be a part of the study. We have invited them to the workshop on the 11th. The URI team is going to just do another once-over on sort of the protocols. And so part of this requires them to take water samples and hand those water samples in, and the URI team examines those water samples. A few of the homes will have monitoring systems installed in their wells to give even more data. So it's really comprehensive. And it's, it's part of our sort of ongoing effort. You know, we have the, we have the study that, the hydrology study that has been going on with North Tiverton and Stonebridge, with sort of looking at the public water side of things. This is our opportunity to gather data on the non-public side of things, individual wells, groundwater in general, right? And both of those two data sets will help inform our ongoing deliberations and discussions about sort of the viability of just water in town as a, as an incredibly valuable resource. So does that help?
Data that you can use as a board to make decisions.
Yeah, so it's actually a kind of a cool thing to be able to do.
Can anybody go to the meeting on Thursday?
Of course.
Yeah, that's totally open, yeah. All right.
And Ed sent out another round of letters last week?
Yeah.
Seeing more participants?
Yeah, I don't know what we're getting back, because I've gotten a couple of people. I don't know if they're from the new, I don't think so from the addresses, so we'll see.
Yep. And just to be clear, part of, part of the group that has been approved for participation is from the Stafford Pond area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anything else on URI?
No, that's it. We'll see, we'll find out more on Thursday.
All right, great. 10D, approval of minutes for July 1st and August 5th. Let me just ask, did anyone have any substantive comments or edits for the July 1st set of minutes?
I got one. Had, had to fix the members present and members absent. There was an error.
For July 1st?
For July 1st.
Okay, that's important. Anybody else?
What is he, correct?
Oh, for August, I'm sorry, for August.
That was for August?
For August, yes.
Let me open up the question another way. Does anyone have any substantive updates for either July 1st or August 5th minutes? All right, hearing none. I will entertain.
Did you have different people present and absent? Yeah, so do July 1st and then do August.
Okay, as amended, okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st, 2025, as handed out in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Dick, this time. All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstain? You two guys, okay, great. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of August 5th, 2025, as amended by Ed.
What was amended?
It was, it was the clarification of board members present and board members not present.
And that was, VA was absent?
VA was absent.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion from Dick, do I have a second?
Second.
Alan. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Abstain?
I was lurking about that.
Okay.
Yes, you were.
Okay. All right, moving on. Update from Tiverton Zoning Ordinance Revision Committee, Cheryl.
Well, as we just mentioned, we have pools and the animals going before our workshop. We're working now on the Show Street area, and we're also going to include some adjacent areas to that. And then from there, we'll work our way into the watershed areas.
Got it, great. Thank you for your help there. Update from the North Tiverton Business Park Committee, Ashley?
Sure. The final report was submitted to the council. We provided them with a overview presentation last night. And I can email you guys.
I was going to ask if we could get a copy of that.
Yep, I can email you a copy of the report.
Okay. Thank you for your work on that. That's also a reminder, perhaps for an agenda item, we need to identify a liaison to the Harbor Commission?
Yes, we do.
Can we put that on the, oh, no, we can't put that on the October 7th agenda? Is that locked in?
You, you can put things on. Other people cannot come with an application to put things on.
So let's put on the October 7th, identifying a planning board liaison to the Harbor Commission.
Yeah, I should have clarified that. You're not going to have any new applications.
Got it.
You may have little items.
Okay. With that, Rosemary?
I have a privileged motion, we adjourn at 10:12.
10:12, thank you all.